Welcome to the March 27th special meeting of the Calabars County Planning Commission and review of the draft zoning update. We'll get started with Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I assume we don't have any staff announcements unless Gina has something to share with us?
No, the only thing I have to share is that Martha with Miller Planning will not be with us today. She had some prior engagements and could not attend. So her recommendation is that we skip over to administration and permits. So if you guys don't mind, then that's where we'll start and then she'll be joining us tomorrow. So depending on where we leave off today, we can choose where we want to circle back around to and pick up tomorrow.
So that kind of takes care of the agenda also.
Yeah.
And there are no consent agenda items and no regular agenda items today. So we are ready to get started on the informational item, the zoning code update. I'm going to start on page...
168.
Administration and permits. And if there are any members of the public online, they are welcome to chime in as we move through this review. My first two pages look really clean.
Yeah, it's wonderful. If something on 170, do you have anything?
What you got on that section?
Okay, about the middle of the page, 17.26.040C. Interpret the zoning code as needed for members of the public and other county departments. And I would add boards and commissions.
Okay, I'm sorry, I wasn't paying attention.
Well, I'm shocked.
I realized that I had my screen on the wrong page, so I was fiddling with the computer.
Okay.
I'm sorry, one more time?
Page 170.
170.
Subdivision C, about the middle of the page. Interpret the zoning code as needed for members of the public and other county departments, comma, boards and commissions.
Of course, the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors will have the authority to disagree with that interpretation.
Sure.
They can give it a try. Okay.
I have something on 171.
Go ahead.
Okay, the first line of 17.26.050. This table summarizes the powers and duties that each review authority, and then I would put in parentheses after that, see section 17.43.180, close parentheses. And particularly because when I've read review authority, I assumed it was an authority that would be reviewing some prior decisions, but it's not true. The Planning Director is a review authority. So I think we need to have this definition in there.
So either a reference or a hyperlink or both?
Well, I think we've been told the hyperlink is not totally reliable. And also, somebody actually is looking at it.
Right. If it's printed, they wouldn't...
It'd be nice to have.
Okay. And then we have our review authorities listed on the next page.
You know, it's interesting, we have review authorities listed, but not... It doesn't have the Planning Director on there.
It says director.
It says it earlier in it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah. You've got...
Yeah, I know. Okay, anything else in that section? Let's go ahead and look at common procedures.
Anything on common procedures? Okay. Yeah, I was concerned with 17.27.020. I think we need to be more specific when we're talking about someone other than the owner or the owner's agent. They're under applicant, section A. I think I would feel a lot more comfortable if we said, if the application is made by someone other than the owner or the owner's agent, proof of the right to, and then I'd cross out use and, possess the property and use it in the manner as applied for. Because what we're really concerned about is this application, does this person have the right to do, right from the owner, to do what that person is actually asking to do?
So I actually had some comments on this later in this section, same issue. And I wondered if we didn't need a generic explanation of who's entitled to make an application.
Well, that's what I thought this section would do.
Yeah, it doesn't really say, but under applicant, it doesn't really, well, it says proof of the right to use and possess the property.
So possess, I think, you know, is a term of art. Usually we look for a lease.
Right.
Possess re-entra.
Yeah, but the less he wouldn't necessarily have the right from the owner to put on a special event or...
But it's right there in the applicant definition.
Well, all I'm trying to do is make it more specific, is the general right to use and possess the property. But what we're concerned about is the right to possess the property and use it in the manner as applied for.
It says as applies for.
Right.
As applied for, it says that. Third line.
I'm just moving use to get it closer to as applied for, that's all.
But there's other places where somebody else...
I'll withdraw.
It's further on, there's some places where it talks about an applicant who has the standing to apply for something, and it wasn't necessarily to a specific property. It had more to do with zoning amendments, things. So I'm, well, we'll talk about when we get there. I think this is fine for the purposes here.
So find the way it is?
Yeah.
Okay. I think so. It looks good. Pretty solid. I have to make sure, cross out my comments I've written in, so the next time around, they don't do the same thing.
Sometimes I put little checks, I'm not sure what that check means, that I talked about it or what.
Under the pre-application review, a applicability, one mandatory pre-application review. It's unclear to me what exactly is meant by new construction here. Are we talking about construction of new buildings? Or are we talking about new construction of a fence that wasn't there before? Or...
Under the building code, new construction is a newly built project, not an addition or an alteration.
Oh.
That's why this says or additions.
Okay, so should we say new, or required for all construction of new buildings? Or put in a definition of new construction?
Well, I think...
New construction by itself is a term of art, that phrase.
But that's fine, but we ought to have it in here. I mean, it isn't, it wasn't, didn't jump out to me as a very, as clear what the term of art is, so I...
Do we need a definition of new construction in the definitions?
Yes, that's what I was thinking.
Do we have one?
No, unless I missed it. Yes, right.
It goes on for so long. Where's the end?
Not under new construction.
It's under construction.
Is it?
Yeah.
Oh, great.
It's in where?
Under construction.
Under construction, new?
Well, no, but that doesn't, new construction, site excavation and grading and verbal group, from what I understand, I think we ought to incorporate the building codes.
Yeah, they usually pretty kind of spell it out. I think we could...
Maybe we could refer to the building.
I think we would want to do a, I would not refer to the building code. I don't think you want to give people the impression that they can always refer to the building code or that they would always match. It might make sense to first do a search of new construction in this document and make sure that every place we refer to it, it clearly is intended to mean a new project and not just an addition or alteration.
But...
And then you have the definition, but make sure that it's...
But a project would not include like fence?
It could, yeah, that would be new construction.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think we may need to make it clear. But I think, I think you're suggesting...
I just think we need to make sure that we're using it consistently everywhere, that's all.
Okay, so we have a definition of construction.
Of construction.
Right.
But not new construction.
Not, okay, well... So new implies that it's not existing, and we have a definition of construction, so I guess I'm not seeing what the issue is.
I'm looking for the construction.
So if you're talking...
Page 253.
Yeah, but are we talking here, in this mandatory pre-application review, are we talking about review being required for, before new grading?
No, grading is a...
Well, grading is, yeah, grading is going to be part of a larger project, which it usually is.
But it...
Then, then we need to, we need to take a look.
So the pre-application review is pre-application review by the planning department. The grading permit, so this, I think the whole code assumes there would be an application to planning, right?
So...
But what I'm saying, grading is included in the definition of construction.
Yes, when there's grading, when there's grading that's going to be proposed with a discretionary action, absolutely. You cannot go grade before you apply for a permit of discretion for which you have, we have discretion over, prior to the approval of that permit.
I actually think, I have to say, I mean, for me, I, this is such standard language.
Yeah.
I agree with Gina that it makes sense as is, for what that's worth, but I...
But the people reading this are not necessarily people who know what the meaning is. So I mean, new construction just means it, that it's a... We should make sure that we use it consistently, that's the first thing. But normally, it means a new building, new structure, you know, of some kind.
But if we're defining construction, I guess I'm not finding what...
Well, but I'm, it wasn't clear to me at all that we wanted pre-application review for an application for grading.
They wouldn't be using the zoning code for that application.
Well, but it's in the definition.
Right, but what we're saying is when...
For somebody that doesn't know what the term of art means, it's unclear or...
I think it's clear because it follows up by, now I've lost my entire place where I was.
So I suppose if it's unclear to anyone, they don't understand it, then they would get on the phone or come by the counter and then we would lead them through what needs to happen.
Or look to the definition under the section.
Yeah.
Which we don't have.
Well, we have a definition of construction.
Of construction, yes we do. Okay, then...
But new construction is a different meaning than construction.
I just, it wasn't, it wasn't clear to me that the people such as yourself that drafted pre-application review meant construction as broadly as it's defined.
They don't, probably, because you're, well, you're saying that you would pick any piece of that out, but new construction means just what it is, newly constructed, not necessarily grading unless there's retaining walls and things that need, so it's...
Right.
I just don't think it's going to be confusing, but...
But again, when we're talking about a discretionary application...
No, we're not disagreeing.
Oh, you're not?
We're not disagreeing, we're saying the same thing. If all you were doing was getting grading permit, you would not use zoning code.
Right, right.
Then there's no use association with it.
So say you're grading for a single-family residence, and the single-family residence is a permitted use, they're not going to have to go through a pre-application review with the planning department, they can get their grading permit to build a permitted use. But when we're dealing with, when we're dealing with discretionary actions, then that's different.
Well, that doesn't say it's discretionary, it says for all industrial.
Commercial or industrial.
Right, okay. So if you put pre-application review for discretionary projects in the header, that would get rid of the grading permit issue.
You don't...
But I don't think that's the intention. I think that they are asking people that are doing a commercial or industrial project, even if they believe that it is allowed under the zoning code to make a pre-application review, just like we used to do the site development review thing for those kinds of projects, so that it teases out all the concerns that these people might not know about before they get hung up and discover that the road that serves the project is, has such a low level of service that they're never going to be able to do it.
Some reason I thought we were calling that something else. Because you're right, Michelle, we are now requiring a review of those, of those applications so we can avoid confusion later on with other agencies and stuff.
What about for all construction of new structures or additions of more than 2,000 square feet?
That would be hot.
That's what I suggested.
Okay, what did you say, Julie?
All new construction of new structures or additions of more than 2,000 square feet.
Construction of new structures or additions of more than, and the only place that that might bite us would be something like a miniature golf project. It doesn't really have any traditional structures. It seems to have thought they didn't need anything.
Yeah.
Structures or uses?
I think, I think your language is great.
I think it's going to cover 99% of the time and will be.
Then I would suggest that...
Those oddball things are never, are probably not going to be looking here anyway.
Then I would suggest we change, after the word construction, well, after construction of new structures, that it should be and instead of or, because the pre-application review is required for both of those.
And/or.
Or, yeah.
And/or?
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, guys. Weather the storm.
Okay.
It's just, I think we have to keep in mind that something is a term of art, if you're not an artist, you need to have it spelled out.
Anything else on 174?
No. I don't have any, 175. 176, I just have a question. How, how do you determine the applications deemed withdrawn and under B refund of fees? I'm not saying that there's anything wrong with what's printed here, but how does the planning department determine the unused portion of the fees? Do you have timesheets or...
No, we have, basically, it was an old formula that we have been using since I came on, that basically, it's not really a formula.
We don't have to go into too much...
Yeah, it doesn't, not really into details, but we do have, we do have, we do have something that we utilize, depending on how far in the process we are and how much time we've spent, there's a different allocation of monies that we keep at a certain point in the process.
And it's worked.
It's worked so far, I mean...
Great. And, you know, as I say, I'm not suggesting any change here, I'm just...
But that brought up a whole other thing. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Deemed withdrawn by the planning director, by planning staff, should we say that? Because if we say just deemed, it could be, the owner said, didn't tell anybody, but they deemed it withdrawn and they want their money back.
Yeah, we can.
Where does it say deemed in here?
It's B under applications deemed withdrawn.
Is withdrawn.
And an application is, but withdrawn by who? Or it could be that it's, I mean, there's two situations, right? One is where the owner wants to withdraw it, and the second one is where it's been abandoned.
Well, I think deemed comes with abandonment sort of thing.
I mean, if we say is withdrawn, we describe the circumstances in which it can be withdrawn in A.
And how about if we just...
It just captures all of it, no?
Yeah, I mean, okay, how about instead of, on A, henceforth B null and void, is henceforth be deemed withdrawn?
Null and void has, makes it sound like it can't come back.
Right.
That's fine, but then, then, then let's change the B to null and void. At the time an application has become null and void.
It's okay, it sounds like it would come back. You read the whole thing in context.
Which...
I just think we should say deemed withdrawn by, it even needs to be the planning director or planning staff. Somebody has to officially say this, this is withdrawn.
Then I think you need to say, is deemed by the planning director to be withdrawn.
That's, that's what I was saying, it's deemed withdrawn by the planning director.
Except withdrawn by the planning director sounds like he's...
Oh, yes, you're right.
Deemed by the planning director to be withdrawn.
So does the same thing apply whether it's withdrawn or abandoned, the refund of fees?
If it's abandoned?
If the applicant chooses to not proceed, it would be the same thing, correct?
Well, or just never respond. Or just never respond, right. So, you know, we, we have a practice where we basically give notice...
Right.
By, you know, pursuant to this section of code, and everything is in writing, which puts them on notice that, you know, they've got only so long to respond and, and, yeah, so they have the ability to either just go away and never come back, for which then we will deem the application officially withdrawn, but they have to request a refund. So we do have a process. And then, of course, if they choose to withdraw their application, then again, they have to put that in writing and request a refund of unused application fees.
That isn't covered under B, under B, by its any remaining fees shall be returned. You know, it doesn't say they've got to ask for them.
Yeah, that's been the practice, is that they have to ask for the fees.
Well, you just keep trying.
No, I mean, if you have a practice where you're making them ask, you really should, because the ordinance as written would not, would require you to do it regardless of whether they ask.
And we do that frankly because the auditor's office requests all of that in writing, and so we've never just made the decision to with, to refund fees.
Then I think B needs to be amended or, upon application.
Right.
So if you have at the times an application is deemed by the planning director to be withdrawn upon application, if fees submitted with the project, I don't know, I guess, I guess upon application...
Shall be returned to the project applicant.
Upon application.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's pretty informal, it's just a, yeah, upon written request by the applicant.
Yeah, okay, that's good.
Upon written request, that's great. Okay, next, anything else on this page?
Why no?
It's notice stuff is all just the way it has to be. Yes, two.
Up at the top, under scope of approval, A, so, I think we ought to be saying, the scope of approvals shall include, not just say includes. And the last part of this needs to be clarified, at least for me. The approval of a new use shall terminate all rights and approvals for previous uses no longer occurring on the same site or location. And I didn't, it's, we've got a couple of things there. The uses, previous uses, would these be previous inconsistent uses? And then the other thing is no longer occurring, how recently was no longer?
Do you think, do you mean non-conforming uses?
Yeah, or like conditional...
Because I don't see how even the approval of a...
Right.
An additional, like a use permit would, would in...
Invalidate.
Invalidate a, a, a use.
Do we need that sentence?
I would say it would have, it should say conditional or non-conforming uses if you're going to terminate them. And I think the reason is, let's say you had a legal non-conforming use because it predated the zoning code, but now they've gone in and got an approval and that non-conforming use is no longer happening, so they're, they're telling you now specifically, you can no longer have that non-conforming use because you converted this to a new conditional use permit, and that's what you're allowed to do.
But, so you're saying that the use, the use is still occurring, but it's now legal?
It's allowed.
I'm trying to understand what you're just saying.
It doesn't matter, I'm saying, if we said unless otherwise specified, so there's the opportunity, the approval of a new use shall terminate, terminate all rights and approvals for previous conditional or non-conforming uses no longer occurring on the same site or location.
So you...
That people don't think they can bring back something...
Start those uses again.
Up again, right.
Okay.
Without going through the process to get them. And there's the opportunity to go ahead and codify them as part of this new approval.
Okay, so what's, what's the language?
Between previous and uses, I just put conditional or non-conforming. All I, between previous and uses, I just put conditional or non-conforming. I don't know, Julie, is that?
I think that sounds fine. To me, that is fine.
Okay, great, thank you. That's a lot clearer than looking for. I may have been on the planning commission for years, but I don't understand some of this stuff.
Well, I think.
Well, and a lot of this is, is new to everyone as well, so.
I think it's useful to have a sample idea in mind of how it applies, that what makes the difference.
Right, right.
Otherwise, I have places where I'm like, when would this ever occur?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's where I was there.
Okay, did you have anything else on that page?
Nope, but I do have the main thing on one eighty is lapse. What, before I get into my, how I'm gonna massacre this section or propose it, what's the purpose of this lapse provision? Because I don't see what happens between a lapse and a revocation.
I, I guess a little background, um, from the legal perspective is there's, it's sort of not intuitive, but once a permit, once a use that you've gotten permission for, um, has been granted or allowed, if it's not, if it's act, once it's begun, once it's deemed established, which itself is, there's arguments about want to use, there's case law arguments, but want to use is established, there's a gap period. And, um, once it has been established, even if it has been not used for a long time, you are allowed to get rid of it so that something else can be done with the property, but you have to go through this revocation hearing first. And I think.
Even if you, if you're the, the owner.
So if you're, so if, if the planning, if you're the owner, let's say you had a mini golf use, okay, that you needed a CUP for, you got, and you, you built something, you started building it, you have, you essentially, within the meaning of the law, established a mini golf course. Then you, um, sell the property down the road and somebody wants to build something else. And in the meantime, we've decided mini golfs are really bad use to have there. We can't just say it's been abandoned and so therefore it's now prohibited. You have, because it was already established once, you'd have to revoke, you'd have to revoke.
Yeah.
That use. So that's.
Yeah, but.
That's just, I'm just giving you legal things.
When it's legal non-conforming, as soon as they have abandoned it, they're no longer allowed to do it.
That's legal non-conforming.
Exactly, so this is actually legally established with a conditional use permit or a CUP.
Right.
But, but the, the section, something yet, it lapses and then the permit may be revoked. Um, which it sounds like that's.
Well, this is when it's already been validated.
So it's been validated, the, the permit is approved, it's been validated.
The use is established.
They're established, they're, just say, um, you know, it's a.
This says we can re, go ahead and revoke it if they.
Right.
If they haven't moved on with the use.
Say it's a, it's a vacant, it's a, it's an area that's undeveloped, say for instance, and it's, it's a use that may otherwise not be compatible with residential. Um, they're going through the use and, you know, they, they establish it and maybe it's, it's, it's an operative business for a couple of years and then the property sells and the new owner doesn't do anything and they don't continue it. And it goes on down the road five, 10 years. And, you know, 15, 20 years now, they've established residential all around it maybe and it's no longer compatible. You can't just recommence the use because it's lapsed over a procession of time.
But in this case, we will need, it's not an abandoned use because they have already established it. This gives us the authority, it gives us a basis when we come forward for the revocation hearing. We can cite to this section and say, see, we're allowed to revoke it because it hasn't, even though it's been established, it hasn't been continued.
I just have one question. I think we need to, I think all of this makes sense to me. It just should say revoked by the county or by the planning director or whatever, by the hearing procedures. But it doesn't have to be initiated by the owner.
Right.
Yeah, the owner may not be interested in doing that.
There are a couple of things. Uh, I, I still don't understand. This, this looks like it's contemplating that it needs to be revoked once it's lapsed.
It does.
But there doesn't seem to be any, anything that's gonna happen between lapse and revocation. I mean, the code of compliance or the planning director doesn't have jurisdiction to do anything except to revoke. So, uh, you know, it seems to me that you might have situations where you have neighbors clamoring that it's, it's lapsed, it's lapsed, go in and do something, even though they've abandoned the use. Um, it seems to me to make, make more sense. This, this section E, uh, gives a, uh, the, the triggering language, the, uh, let's see. If the structure authorized by the permit is removed from the site or remains vacant or unused for its authorized purpose or is abandoned or discontinued for a period of greater than 12 consecutive months. It's actually broader than the equivalent provision in the revocation section, which is on the next page seventeen point two, seven point one, three zero, where just says the use in question has ceased to exist or been suspended for 12 months or more. I mean, there's, it seems to me you take the language from the lapse section and replace C three with it, uh, the C three of the revocation provision. So you have as broad a provision for, for revocation as you need. Um, and you don't need the, the lapse provision. And so what would be left under E would be the last sentence, which basically says, once something's revoked, you can't do it anymore, which seems to me to be, uh, pretty obvious. But if that's needed, well, then you just change the section, the lapse section E to, uh, to provide that the, that, that last sentence. I, I don't, I don't think that section E is needed as long as we make sure the revocation provision under point one, three, zero, C three, make it as broad as the language in here that is, uh, qualifies something for a lapse. Am I totally confused, everybody?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
I just, I just, it seems to me we've got this, this uh, time between lapse and revocation that makes no sense.
I, I think the idea is that when somebody is applying for a permit, they're not gonna look at the revocation section, they're gonna look. It, it just tells somebody who's applying that, hey, if you don't actually keep this use going, it could be revoked, see over here. So yeah, there is some duplication.
Well, you would be, but.
But you're right, it doesn't need as much.
It's already lapsed if, if the section applies.
But this is a heads up to somebody that if you allow your permit, your activity or use to lapse, that you're, it could be revoked.
Why don't we just say that? Why don't we just say, uh, if, if the use is discontinued, uh, it may be subject to revocation under seventeen point two, seven point one, three.
I think, I think we could simplify the language to make it, and then we should probably say 12 consecutive months over in C three. That, that's the only thing that's missing, I think.
Well, or this, this, uh, structure authorized by the permit is removed from the site or, or remains vacant or unused for its author, if there was an abandoned.
We could just use the same language as C three. The use in, if, if the use in question has ceased to exist or has been suspended for 12 consecutive months or more, it may be revoked pursuant to seventeen twenty-seven, one, three, zero.
That's fine, without going into lapse at all.
That's, I mean, we could use the word lapse just to show them.
I, I wouldn't though. I mean, it just.
I, I.
It's signal.
Why not just say what you just said?
I think you need the section that says lapse. If your activity lapses, you're, here's the heads up. It could result in a revocation of your permit. It does say may, it doesn't say shall. And then, but I do thi, I agree that the wording in both sections should be parallel. I think that's what Julie's saying.
Yeah.
But I think, I think what Julie said was great, but that, that, um.
I, I think that the word lapse tells somebody who's applying that, hey, just letting it lapse is enough reason that we might invoke the revocation section.
Don't have.
They won't think about revocation. If they see revocation, they're gonna say, I don't need to read that because it means I have to do something wrong first. And the word lapse shows, oh, wait, just doing nothing at all is enough to get me into revocation.
That's exactly how I see it.
Yeah, it's like providing a fair warning.
Right.
But I do agree with you, Tim, that it should be the same language.
Yeah. What you're saying, it shall lapse.
I, I, we don't have to say.
That we've got the same language creating two things. One is a lapse and the other is the.
We, we could say it may be, we could say if, when a permit has been validated, it may be revoked if, and then quote C three.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, and then.
That would be fine.
And, and refer to section C three, you know.
And the only change to C three would be to add 12 consecutive months.
Or this other wording. So are we. Authorized purposes abandoned or discontinued for a period of, just making it completely parable. Parallel or exact duplication of.
But that was not use the word lapse, which I.
I know, I would continue to use the word lapse.
Okay, so.
Well, then what happens between it's lapsed? So.
Then the neighbor notices it's lapsed and they're waiting out that 12 months before they complain to them.
Yeah.
It's all based on, it's a complaint based, yeah. Okay, so.
I don't, I wanna say though that maybe it, it says it shall lapse.
It said it may be revoked.
But then we say we may revoke it, so it's lapsed regardless, but we, there's no requirement that it be revoked. Is that the intention? I think it probably is.
Okay.
Well.
So are we shortening up E lapse, um, to simply say, um, once a permit has been validated, it may be revoked.
Pursuant to seventeen.
Pursuant to section seventeen two, seven, one, three, oh.
C three.
C three, and then you want C three to be replaced with the language.
No.
Under.
No, I don't think so, right? I think we want 12.
That's what I thought you were saying.
That's, that's.
It could, then it would shorten the lapse section to just saying.
Do you want the whole entire section or just to the point where it says uh, accordance with section seventeen two, seven, one, three, oh, revocation, oh, wait.
Yeah, and then change, uh.
Permits revoked.
One, three, oh.
Permits may be revoked.
To be as broad as you want. If you want to have all the language from the lapse provision.
So it could say lapse, when a permit has been validated, it shall be considered lapsed. If, um, the use or structure authorized by the permit is discontinued as described in, and put all of it in three over, under revocation of permits, under C three. And then add blah, blah, blah in accordance with, and then no use of land or structure.
Yeah, I mean, why do we need that, that sentence? Uh, I mean, isn't that obvious? If something's been revoked, you don't have the right anymore? I mean, I just don't, uh, that seems superfluous. Something's been revoked, you have to have a new permit. Well, yeah.
It doesn't say exactly that.
You know, no use of land or structure, the permit for which has lapsed in compliance with this section and has been revoked in compliance with section so, so, so.
Right, but, but under the revocation section, it doesn't actually say exactly that.
Well, no, it doesn't say it because isn't it obvious that if something's revoked, you can't do it anymore?
I, I feel like we're making way too much of something here and that really the heads up on the lapse piece needs to remain and if we need to, that we do need to say who would be revoking it, like who would initiate that action has to be described somewhere. And I don't care whether then the lapse section just refers you to the revocation section and all the detail is there, that would be fine, that would keep that shorter and have less likelihood of having, um, subtle differences between the two pieces.
So you're gonna have, uh, permits where the use has lapsed, but doesn't necessarily need to be revoked.
Or they haven't gotten to it yet or they don't know about it.
Well, but then it's, so people call code of compliance and say, hey, these people say they can do this anytime they want. But no, they can't. But.
No, it says it may be revoked.
Oh, I know, that's what I'm saying. It's, you're gonna have things, things that have lapsed.
We can't have it be where we, it's automatically gone just because it's lapsed.
That's fine. All I was suggesting is we don't, we don't use lapse, we just say it may be revoked. I mean, and it's fine to give a heads up in this section. But it may be revoked under section so and so, and you don't have this zombie walking around with the permits lapsed but hasn't been revoked. What, what is it then?
I think that.
Okay.
That it's really okay because it, it can be considered lapsed and not revoked, so.
No, not considered, it will have lapse.
Yes, I think it's a zombie until we actually take action. It is a zombie, but until we take action to revoke it, it's just a zombie that we have to be given notice that there's a zombie before we, before we do anything.
So, you know.
We're not following every single.
People that are out after the permit holder would come to the planning department and say, this has been lapsed for 10 years.
Right.
Please revoke, that's what you do.
Exactly.
Okay, well. Good luck on coming up with the language.
So are we now saying that it's okay the way it is with the exception of adding uh, the word consecutive after 12 and between months on C three?
I think for E you wanna say it may be revoked, not shall, right? I think that's what the commission wants.
Doesn't say, it says, it does say it may be revoked.
Yeah.
It doesn't say shall.
Oh, whoops.
But we're taking the language that for describing the inactivity and we're putting it over into section seventeen point two, seven foot, one, three, zero, three, correct?
Right, making them the same. Or just referring, putting this over here and then referring to it over there.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, yeah.
That's what, do you, do you understand?
Okay.
Okay. So it's only occurs in one place and is referred to in the other, the other location.
And it, and it needs to be set forth in the revocation section.
Right. Maybe we should look at this one again quickly before we forget. Maybe we should look at this one again quickly before we forget what we were talking about. So if we have a chance tomorrow to come back to it and just take a look at the new language.
Maybe after we have an acting planning director.
Well, that, I'm saying, we don't wanna wait that long to see that the language reflects what our discussion was. Cause we may look at it again and go, oh, that's, that's not what I thought I said. But maybe I did.
Okay, sounds good.
Are we ready for, um, do you have anything on one eighty one?
Other than what we just transferred from one eighty.
Yeah.
I had stuff, I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
And, and I, Gina, I do apologize, I mean.
For what?
Well, I take, when I take a fresh look at what we accomplished before, I see, you know, additional problems and I'm.
Well, you know, you don't get a second chance to go back and.
Well, that would.
Second, they, they vision.
They do have the power to change. They can, they can tell us we need to do a zoning improvement.
Try not to suggest the same.
Too much.
Now, if you went back and said, oh, I like it the way it was before, forget.
Our actions, I think that when I, we get here.
Okay, so starting at the bottom of one eighty one, the notice of action.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the sentence that starts the bottom of the page. The notice shall describe the commission's action, but it's finding. The director shall mail the notice to the permit holder, property owner, and I would add any appellant from a previous action of the planning director. Cause that isn't necessarily the permit holder.
You have to say all parties to the action.
Yes, I.
Okay, I mean.
Instead of saying permit holder decision, you want just all parties?
Well, it says any person or entity who requested the revocation proceeding.
Yeah, but anyhow, I don't wanna have, somehow have it the person that appealed. By appealing, you become a part, right? The person.
This is the original notice of action, yeah, okay.
Well, this is.
Then there, you can feel it.
Yeah, but I mean, the person, here we're talking about following a planning commission action to revoke or modify.
Right.
Okay, so, you know, the.
So we would capture probably the, so we have the notice, the permit holder and the person who requested the revocation proceeding would be the appellant automatically? No?
Well, yes, I think you would.
Well, unless the, the, if it wasn't revoked.
You still tell the person who requested the revocation proceeding.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, requesting the revocation proceeding does not request that the, the appeal, the appeal hearing and the, necessarily.
But then that's.
Do we not something that describes who the parties are to a.
I mean, I think saying all parties, there's, there's a section for standing in seventeen, I don't know if it's carried over to seventeen ninety eight, but.
I'm sorry, that's what I'm, I think we're searching for is if there's a clear thing setting who parties are to a proceeding and includes everybody we want to have included, then we can just say all parties as defined in section.
So I assume this is gonna carry over into G. Um, of seventeen twenty seven one forty, which is the public notice and hearing. Also notification of anybody, but I, I think putting all parties in is probably better because it's generic and we don't know how we got to this point.
Yeah, cause G, well, it talks about the applicant, the party filing the appeal.
Yeah, it's not, it's not really, yeah.
So do we have a place where we define parties?
You don't really have a, an applicant in a revocation hearing. You have the person who requested the revocation and the original.
Yeah.
Permit holder. Right?
I think it, it sounds to me that we really needed a, somewhere early on, a definition of parties to a proceeding.
It says rights of appeal, so we could just say.
Where?
I mean, under appeal, it talks about who has a right to appeal.
Mm-hmm.
Where, where are you?
Um, one forty B. One seventeen twenty seven one forty B, right underneath. On the same page, it talks about who has a right to appeal. I think that we can assume anybody with a right to appeal is a party, if they, if they exercise the right. So I think parties is sort of self, I feel like it defines itself pretty well, but.
I mean.
Yeah, and any other person aggrieved by a decision.
But I mean, we, we're, we're talking about anybody who actually did undertake the action. So I think parties is.
Yeah, but that's the rights of appeal. Once they do appeal, why then they need to get noticed? But I mean, you know, any other person aggrieved by a decision isn't necessarily gonna get noticed, et cetera.
Right, but I, if we say all parties, I think with, we don't, I'm not sure we have to go on to define parties. We have a separate definition of who gets to be a party if they want to be. And I don't know that we need to add a definition.
And I think they covered it, really, it is, who is the permit holder, the property owner and the person requesting the revocation? Those are the parties.
That's what I thought.
And us, you know.
Well, but then that gets me right back to where it was. That doesn't necessarily include somebody who filed an appeal.
But that's not.
It does.
This is for the original action, the original revocation.
Following, D, what we're talking about is following planning commission action to revoke or modify a permit.
Yeah.
Okay.
Why would we give it to anybody other than the person who appealed, the property owner and the applicant?
I mean, the only people that can appeal are those people right there.
The, we've got the, the rights of appeal section.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, any other person aggrieved by the.
Yeah.
But so only the people who are aggrieved to actually exercise their rights are the ones who would get noticed. We don't wanna include that entire group of people.
No, no, I know.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is somebody who has exercised that right.
Wouldn't that.
Is not included under this notice of.
Why wouldn't, so you're saying somebody could exercise that right who hasn't actually requested?
This is pre, this is after we take the action but before an appeal is filed. We can't send it out to somebody because the appeal hasn't happened yet.
Well, what if, I mean, notice of action, following planning commission action.
Right.
Okay, that could be.
On the revocation hearing.
But that could be, we could have been reviewing that, reviewing a decision by the planning director.
No, that would be an appeal from a, this, this is revocation, this is separate.
It's the original.
This would be start, this would start with a recommendation by the planning director to revoke an existing permit. The commission would hold a hearing.
Okay, okay, that's.
Yes.
Now, now I think I'm coming on.
Cause then we come around with this, we get another opportunity to hear.
Okay, so, let's see. Okay, so any revocation of a, of a permit starts with the planning.
Well, it says by the board of supervisors, planning commissioner, director. The county would initiate a revocation proceeding. It's not an application, it's a, this is a government initiated.
And, but any revocation of any permit starts with us.
No. It could be the director.
Well.
So the, and then the only people who would participate in a revocation hearing would be the applicant, okay? Or the landowner or somebody else who agrees or disagrees with the revocation.
I think the question is, will it always be held publicly in front of the planning commission?
Yes, yes.
Yes, that's what.
That's it.
Yes.
That's what I'm saying, is that the, the, the planning director can say, hey, commission.
Right, it always.
Revoke.
Yes, they can't unilaterally, there has to be a planning commission hearing to revoke.
Okay.
Okay.
So now I'm fine with everything that, just how.
So we're okay?
Yeah.
Well, until you get to the next sentence. I'm sorry. Failure to provide, this is the, at the top of page one eighty two, the new sentence in red. Failure to provide notice under this section does not invalidate the action of the planning commission. Okay, my concern is if you fail to provide notice under this section and therefore a person who would appeal the action doesn't get the notice and lets the fifteen days it's lapsed. You know, even though the, the planning commission's action has not been invalidated, the time for appeal is lapsed, so I, I was putting in what I think will be considered rather contrived language. However, such failure shall toll the time to appeal that action to the board of supervisors until proper notice is given to prospective appellants.
So in this case, the only people who are getting notice at that level are the people directly involved in it. So I can't imagine that they don't know about the revocation hearing, I mean, so they know what happened.
No, if a landowner didn't show up.
Yeah.
And I, but I think that's the situation. So if a landowner didn't participate, if somebody entitled to notice didn't participate.
Right.
We don't want, they have, there's other reasons why they didn't exhaust their remedies. So I think that's what this is trying to say.
Well, it seems to me that it is, it's, okay, you don't invalidate the action of the planning commission, but if there's somebody out there with the rights to appeal, uh, that don't, that doesn't get noticed.
Notice that, you don't know who they are?
They, the, uh, the permit holder, the property owner.
Parties.
And person who requested the revocation proceeding has not received this notice. Well, what's the purpose of the notice if, if you don't need the notice at all?
So I noticed that this statement has been put everywhere. So I think it's for when people say, well, I didn't get, I don't pick up my mail at the post office except once every couple of weeks.
But it says failure to, failure to provide.
We can change it to receive if that makes everybody feel better.
Right, I think that, that's probably the point.
Well.
If we change provide to receive, cause we, are we.
I, 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 yeah, it gets past the problem that I see, that, that, okay, planning director can be totally incompetent and people can lose their rights.
Well, and I have to agree, I mean, if the notice doesn't mean anything, well, then what's the purpose of sending the notice?
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, why.
Failure to receive, it'd be great.
Okay.
So we should pay attention to this in other locations where this statement has been added.
There are some areas in law where they, where they've decided in certain circuit, there are actually areas where failure to provide notice doesn't rise to the level of giving somebody rights. And I, rather than going through all of that, I would rather just get rid of the sentence and let the legal standards that apply, um, by default.
Great.
You know, we could just get rid of them.
I'm okay with that, cause it kind of disturbed me when I read it too, it's like, like, are we saying we don't have to really do notice?
We got a free ride, but.
Yeah.
So strike the, the last edit.
Is that what you're suggesting?
And I think it's better than trying to monkey with it because in those cases, you know, if somebody complains they didn't get notice.
I agree.
I don't know that having that language changes our rate, our respective positions under.
That's great.
State law.
So search, search and destroy that everywhere or at least check.
Well, I, I, the only exception there is, I mean, if it's stuff about courtesy notice, if people are, I don't wanna, there we should leave it.
I agree.
Cause I don't think failure to receive like the courtesy, if you're not a party, there's places, that's, that's where the state laws. If you, if it says you're supposed to, I want notice so I can attend, you know, and participate in hearings. There's state law that says those courtesy notices, if there's an accident there, it doesn't necessarily invalidate.
It's taken care of by what you just said, that if we take out the sentence.
Right, I'm just saying, don't take it out to the extent it exists in a place where there's a courtesy notice section.
Where it's specifically addressing the courtesy notice.
And the courtesy notice of the people within three hundred feet, is that what?
No.
No, that's mandatory.
That's mandatory to me.
Oh, oh.
Like they sent in an email.
So get on our notice list.
Yeah.
Okay, so, but here we're taking out the sentence.
Right.
Good.
And we should just search and see where else it is and see if it should stay or go.
Okay.
All right, we're in like legalese mire here.
Well, cause it's the admin section.
Yeah, exactly.
That's what you kept grabbing.
Martha knew, she should be gone for this.
Do you have more in these sections or are they all similar issues?
No.
Okay.
Exhaustion of administrative remedies down the bottom of the page.
Mm-hmm.
No issue was not addressed during the planning commission hearing upon which an appeal is based.
Revocation, I think, right, we're only talking about revocation.
No, we're talking, this is a appeal session.
You're right, appeal is.
But it could be the board, I don't, why not just leave it?
Well, I mean, there's no appeal from the board.
It's gonna get appealed from the board, right.
And, 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 yeah.
Well, it's, it was just gonna make it clearer that we're talking about, about a planning commission hearing, not a planning director decision upon which an appeal is based. So it has to be, has to be the planning commission they're talking about here, so we might as well put in the word.
Except it is a revocation hearing.
No, no, it's.
Yeah, well, it is here. It's option of administrative.
It's the next section, we're onto appeals, we're past.
I understand we're under appeals, but you can only appeal, so no issue which was not addressed during the original hearing upon which the appeal is based, that is the revocation hearing.
Well, I mean.
You only get one appeal, right?
Well, I mean, take vertical bridge, okay? It wasn't, it's not a revocation.
But why, the hearing upon which the appeal is based, any given appeal, if you don't raise it at that hearing. I think it's, if we, if we further modify it, we could act, we could accidentally limit ourselves in a way we didn't intend.
Well, here, I don't see.
Yes.
Okay, I, I just thought I'd make, make it clearer because the only hearing here that can be referred to is one that is appealed. And the planning director decision is not a hearing. It's only a public hearing if it goes to the planning commission. And so, uh, under another section. And there's no appeal from the board of supervisors, so it has to be the planning commission that's being talked about here. So why not just say planning commission here? Uh, you know, this doesn't change the law.
Yeah, you're right, cause we're talking generically about A U.
Yeah, yeah. Okay? And I think the hearing upon which an appeal is based. Makes sense? And then for the same reasons, just for clarity, sentence starting at the bottom of the page, if new relevant factual information is presented on appeal to the board of supervisors. Okay? Okay, then when we get to standards of review on. standards of review on page thirty-three, here we are talking about an appeal body, which can be either the planning commission or the, or the, the board of supervisors. So when reviewing any decision on appeal, the appeal body shall review the factual evidence anew without being required to defer, instead of to the prior hearing body's decision, defer to the decision, uh, in the prior proceedings that are being appealed. I'm trying to get into it that, that the planning director isn't a hearing body.
Yeah. How about just not refer to the prior decision?
So you go, I, I love it. Yeah. Uh, just a new period, right?
Yeah.
I like that. Okay with that?
No. Okay. Say that again.
So just end the sentence.
Okay, where are you?
Oh, I'm sorry. Under F, standards of review on page one eighty-three.
Okay.
Well, I think it's fine without being required to defer to the prior decisions. You don't, just don't need hearing bodies again.
Okay, you want, okay, fine. So a new comma, without being required to defer to the prior decision?
Yep.
It could be plural because it could be, we first had a planning director, then we had the planning commission.
Decisions is fine.
Speak up or I need to turn off my hearing aids.
It could be plural, I think.
Oh, yeah.
Decisions should, should stay plural somewhere.
Oh, Lord.
So, so without being required to defer to, cross out the prior decision.
Right.
Good.
That sounds better.
That's great. Then the next sentence, the appeal body may adopt the same decision and find him as were originally approved, or it may modify the decision and/or findings. Okay. So in H, this, this sort of provision later on is, is provided with the, the majority of the members of the hearing body or something.
For what?
I think since the hearing body is here, only have five members, we could make it very clear by saying an action to grant an appeal shall require a vote of at least three members of the hearing body. That would, we would avoid the problem. When we say later on total membership, well, is that the total existing membership? That you only have four right then, five positions? So at least three members covers the whole thing.
Yes.
Then I I don't know. E, well, I guess you do need that. A tie vote or a vote of less than three members shall have the effect of rejecting the appeal.
So is there any, is it just our policy to offer people the option of deferring or rescheduling their hearing if there are only three?
Yeah, that's local, that's not state.
It doesn't need to be in here.
Correct.
Okay. It's a courtesy item.
Right, they could be sorely surprised. Hey.
Okay.
I don't have anything on page one eighty-four.
Yep.
Eight hundred eighty-five, I had something. It's just that, it's a long sentence, I'm trying to figure out what I will, what I put on.
So we're on one eighty-six, design review?
Yeah, well, I haven't quite given up on one eighty-five yet.
Oh, I thought you did.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
You gave up on one eighty-four.
I do.
One eighty-five is just one of those long sentences that you're not sure what it says anymore by the time you get to the end of it.
Yeah, I, okay, I don't have a problem with one eighty-five.
I'm fine with you.
Now we're on one eighty-six?
Now we're on one eighty-six. The only suggestion I have is when, where we say, uh, in the first, the text of the first paragraph, ensure that new development, I think we need to have C, section seventeen point four-three point four-four.
New development versus new construction? Is that what you're finding?
Well, it's just, it's, it's one of those things where for a layman, what do we mean by new develop?
I think it's any application. I mean, new development is anything that comes forward.
Well, let's see, seventeen point C.
Anything we approve.
But sometimes when we use the term development, we mean only subdivisions from parcel maps.
Yeah.
I think that's why it's getting questioned.
Give it a second here.
We could just say new applications.
Well, no, we can say new development as long as people know what it is.
Is there an actual definition of new development?
Development, development is, uh, under D terms, ingredient two fifty-four, any man made change to improved or unimproved real estate, including but not limited to the division of a parcel of land or two or parcels, the construction, reconstruction, conversion, structural alteration, relocation, or enlargement of any structure, any mining, excavation, landfill, or land disturbance, and any use or extension of the use of land. And when I, when I saw development used here, it, I, I didn't know if we were talking about like subdivisions or whatever. It's a very, very broad.
It is very, very broad.
That's why I suggested we have the site there.
I think that, that makes sense.
Hey. Oh, I see.
Okay. Um, this, just on review. So, um, item B on one eighty-eight says reduction in density. Design review shall not result in a reduction of the residential density. So is the intention there that the planning commission can't impose conditions that would require the developer to reduce the allowable density? Where are? Or?
We're at one eighty-eight.
Item B, and I think this occurs somewhere else. Reduction in density, I, I'm wondering what we're trying to say there. Are we saying that they have to have the maximum allowable density? Are we saying that the planning commission can't condition it such that they aren't allowed the, the density that they would traditionally have, or have been allowed under its zoning or general plan designation?
Glad you're raising this because I, I just, I didn't know what we were.
Or are we, and, and is the inverse true? Can the planning commission not allow an increase in density as part of design review? Like, I don't, I don't know what we're trying to say here.
My question is, what differences are making density, why, why, why is there even a density?
So.
Is this the state?
Because I, I don't know about if it's state, I don't know the answer to that. But I, I think that what it says is that to the extent that we have to do fancy design to make it, you know, match the historical significance, if the, if those required changes would reduce the number of units that they could have because there's not enough room now. But if you add the dormers, there's not enough room. If you add the gingerbread, there's not enough room to meet the setbacks or something.
Right.
Um, I think that's what it's saying. I don't have, I don't know, as I sit here, whether that's somehow required as part of.
I guess we need to know why.
I made a note, we'll get clarification.
I think what we might want to just say is that conditions imposed during design review cannot change the allowable density under the general plan, something like that. And then we're just taking that whole issue off the table here.
Well, but do we want to?
Yes, I think we do. Design review is only really for aesthetics. We shouldn't be changing uses or densities or anything like that. At least that's my belief of.
Yeah, so makes sense, that's.
I could be making up my own powers here.
Sounds good.
Okay, move, go with it. Okay, now.
I think anytime we can just refer people back to the general plan when it has to do with densities, unless the specific act is to allow density transfers or something, yeah.
Okay. So.
Administrative use permits.
That's right, now, this is where I was surprised that there's quite a bit of change from the current proposed change to the current ordinance. And I, you know, I, when we went through this the first time, I was, I just kind of assumed we were pretty much following, but since we've not finished with, not finished, since we had hours on vertical bridge and, and looking at administrative use permits, there are changes here and under the purpose, the current, the current ordinance says the purpose of an administrative use permit is to allow uses that are generally low impact to the community.
Yep.
And we don't have that here.
This is generally limited in potential impacts.
Are generally limited in potential impacts.
Okay, you figure that takes care of that?
I think so.
Okay. Then.
It says it there, right? I mean, am I?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I saw Michelle writing something new in there, so I thought.
Just enforcing what you said.
Replace the language generally low impact. Okay, then applicability, approval of administrative use permit is required for uses or development specifically designated for such permit, right? Suggest instead of identified in the tables for the zoning purpose. So I mean, those tables say A U P. And I think it's clear if we say specifically designated for such permit.
Where are you?
This is.
The first sentence.
Seventeen point three zero, point oh two zero.
Applicability.
I mean, everything, uses or developments are all, there are hundreds specifically identified, but there are only certain ones that are designated as being for an A U P, requiring an A U P.
So what are you suggesting?
That it just says specifically designated for such permit.
He wants to re.
Replacing.
Replace the word identified with designated.
I think identified actually.
I'm not just replace identified with designated, but designated for such permit. So you look back there and look for A U P. How about specifically designated, quote, A U P, close quote?
I, I'm fine with it just how it is, specifically identified in the base zoning districts.
You can look back there and say, oh, here's, this use is identified there, that use is identified there. But they're not identified as being designated for A U P.
Then it says which requires an administrative use permit. I, it sounds, seems circular to me.
But that's the second part of that sentence, and/or any other section of this title. We're talking about the subtitle two, the tables.
I don't feel strongly enough to.
Okay, how about this as a, as a, as a compromise? Specifically identified, quote, A U P, close quote, in subtitle two.
I'm fine with that.
Oh, good. Let's do that. Okay. Now, in procedures, the current, uh, ordinance under seventeen point eighty-three point oh three zero point, I can't even read my own writing. Anyway, talks about, uh, the fees and ownership and plans and et cetera as part of the application. The application shall be submitted with the requisite fees, proof of ownership, maps, plans, and any other materials as determined to be necessary by the planning director. Do we need to have that, something like that in, in this replacement section, or is that covered by our general application?
In the, it says, shall we data or other evidence in support?
Yeah, it's just not as detailed.
Right.
If you're happy with this, that's fine. I just, I thought it was important that we look to see what we're changing.
So for an A U P, I, I think it's okay how it is because I think the application is going to be more specific about what is required.
Yeah, the, the form itself.
Not the issue.
Yeah.
The website.
It might not be drawing, say, pre-figured.
The website is going to say what's required.
We have instructions.
Complete application.
Right.
Which give a great amount of detail of what else is required.
Then there is a, a separate provision in the current ordinance about determination of the application completeness. Must be made within thirty days of the application submitted date.
Don't we just make that general statement though in the?
Back in, in common provisions?
In the common, yeah.
If we agree that, that's, I did. So if, if you could just check that, that it's taken care of, that'd be great. Okay, now, this I think is, is important.
Yeah.
Required findings. At the last meeting, it was very handy that the current ordinance said the proposed use will not potentially affect the public health, safety, or general welfare, not just, not adversely affect. Uh, it seems to me it's, uh, so I think we ought to put the word potentially back in there. So we say the proposed use will not potentially.
Does not have the potential to adversely affect the public health, but we did it somewhere else.
That would be fine.
Where are you? Oh, I see.
I see. It's a.
O five O C under required findings.
Okay, so you want, uh, the proposed use will not. Okay, so you want, uh, the proposed use will not have.
Have the potential.
Have the potential to.
To adversely affect.
Okay. But I think that's. And it seems to me in the conditions of approval, we want instead of the ors between A, B, C, D, uh, we have and. Because these conditions are to achieve the following outcomes, not achieve one, at least one of the following outcomes, so it should be and instead of ors.
I mean, restrictions are conditions. Could be and or.
Um.
But you.
Well, we're achieving.
Or by itself.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to achieve the following outcome, so I think that they are all those that are, should be tied with and. Then the, in green down there, the review authority may also require reasonable guarantees and evidence that such conditions are being or will be complied with. I mean, these are the conditions haven't been imposed.
Well, I think, I think sometimes there could be a recordation requirement, there are some basically a, a bond posted, there could be, instead of just having findings, you're gonna pay for, you know, for the improvements, that you actually do something upfront that ties you to it.
But these are conditions that we, we would be, the review authority would be imposing these conditions.
Right, and so basically instead of just saying, you shall pay for all your road improvements, you would also be able to say, and you're gonna post bond to make sure.
So I said, so what you, what we're saying is those conditions already are being complied with, even though we hadn't stated the conditions until.
So, or will be.
Well, that, that we're just saying that in addition to us just telling you these are the conditions, we can require you to guarantee that you will.
Oh, no, I understand.
Comply with that.
I understand, it's the are being that was, I was questioning. So, but what we're, what I think Julie was saying is that some of these conditions might already be.
Or they might say, I have already a plan, okay, you know, so you could say, we're not just gonna say, if the guy comes forward and says, we, we have a grading permit, you can say, no, you need to show that, you need, that needs to be attached.
Yeah, yeah.
As, so I think, I mean, it's just keeping it broad. And if we don't use the are being that much, it's, we still have it in there in case.
Yeah, okay. The conditions, not in existence yet, but now we're going to come into the conditions, but those.
That could have been part of their proposal, they may have proposed that.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine.
All right.
Okay.
One ninety-two?
Yeah.
Sort of general situation.
Well, again, the existing ordinance raises some questions.
So you wanna say identified C U P?
Oh, yes, please.
Yeah, but where is this again?
I think. Right here, yeah, under applicability, just do the same thing we did before.
That specifically identified quote C U P, unquote. Ah, that's, that's elegant.
And then we have Michelle's language somewhere as well with the adversely affect, right?
Oh, when we get to the findings, something.
Yeah, um. This one's, this one's easy. Under purpose, we just, in the first sentence, the words with thee are repeated twice. Take out one.
There's a reason for that. No, I'm just. Sorry.
Oh, jeez, that, once again, that's what I like. Okay, uh. Yeah, we got back to, uh.
C at the top of one ninety-eight is where it does not have the potential to.
And what, uh, what the current ordinance says is conditions of project approval are necessary for protection of the public health, safety, and welfare under the use or eliminate potential environmental effects. So I, I, with a conditional use permit, maybe we wanna be stronger than that. With that one, I, I really didn't have a, a problem with will not adversely affect, I think we need to put potential in there.
Well, it does not have the potential is a higher threshold, actually, so I think if we did it for the A U P, we probably need to do it for the C U P. Until you brought it.
The the, the second part of that sentence, nor be significantly detrimental to surrounding properties or improvements. If it's.
Same word.
Oh, we're still on C.
Yeah, it's the same wording we had in the previous section, it says be significantly awesome.
But then under E, I'm, I'm wondering whether C and E are consistent. The design, location, size, and operating characteristics of the proposed activity are compatible with the existing and reasonably foreseeable future land uses and circulation in the vicinity.
The, the detrimental is so subjective, the other one, E is really, is really more objective about what things are allowed there. And if we just say, if it, you know, if, if we have somebody saying it's aesthetically detrimental, I don't like it, we could be hamstrung if we don't show that it's.
I, I would think that we could get rid of the second part of, of C and just keep E.
I think they're two different issues.
The current ordinance says the proposed land use is compatible with neighboring land use and zoning, so that's basically E.
If a specific use is gonna have noise, it's gonna be heard by everybody. Right, that would be more significant if somebody subjectively doesn't like the burbling of a fountain or.
Well, what I saw was significantly detrimental.
Right.
If something, if something is just detrimental to surrounding properties, is it compatible?
So how many surrounding properties? One person doesn't like it, that's the same.
You say, just say detrimental, people could. Somebody could say, well, it's detrimental to me, I don't like that they have a horse next door, whatever, whatever their argument is, that's not what's gonna be for a C U P, but, um. I, I think we've added significantly to eliminate people's just personal opinions about something, but that, that the vast majority of people wouldn't see as detrimental.
How about unreasonably?
I'd be okay with unreasonably, but I don't.
Why wouldn't you change it? Well, if you, I mean, signi- significant is used a lot by courts, they know what it means.
So reasonable.
You know, it's up to you, significant, just seem, like the word.
Unreasonable.
I wouldn't do it in one way in the C U P section and another way in.
Exactly, it should be the same wherever we use this.
What I'm concerned about is having E and C be compatible. And if, if, of course, I'm using the term that's used in E, but that the size, the design, location, size, and operating characteristics of proposed activity are compatible with the existing and reasonably, reasonably foreseeable future land uses and circulation in the vicinity.
So having something that's compatible with the use is different than whether it's detrimental.
Detrimental?
Yeah, I see them as different.
Oh, okay. So you wanna keep it the way it is, nor, and nor be significantly detrimental?
I'm fine with the way, just exactly how it is right now.
Well, that's.
But that, I know that it's, yeah.
I mean, it.
No, I, I agree, I mean, that, uh, compatible can go through the slow, but detrimental obviously doesn't, so they're different.
Well, if something's really detrimental to surrounding property, it's not compatible with those.
But I think this compatible is speaking to the zone.
Yeah.
Criteria.
So if circuses are allowed in general, but this particular type of circus will also, will have, you know, particularly loud obnoxious or elephant dung smell or whatever, that's different. It can still be, it can be compatible with the uses, but it might be detrimental.
Well, I mean, they're talking about, so you're thinking existing land uses in, in E are only talking about not, not exactly how they're being used, but the, the zoning, what, what's permitted under the zoning?
Right, that's what I think E is saying.
You think it E is.
It's land uses and circulation, that's right out of the zoning code.
Okay, how about unreasonably instead of significant? Cause I think then you can get into the carping neighbor. You know, that's, that's, it's, it's unreasonable for the neighbor to say, I only want a blue circus.
Well, that's a different, that's a this is the, the, it's unreasonably detrimental, we're saying that, that they have but blue is not necessarily even detrimental, that's just a opinion of the neighbor, so I.
Okay, you like a greater.
I'm not, well, I don't know, I can't foresee how be significantly detrimental versus nor unreasonably detrimental would play out in, from a legal perspective, cause I'm not an attorney, so.
I think you can do either one and just.
Would, would, would it be okay in the intersection, we've used that?
I, I think so, I think, you know, we're just used to significant effects, we're significant, like there's land uses full of distinguishing between insignificant and significant, and so it seemed more of a land use type of term, there's, you know.
As long as, as long as you see that something can be detrimental to the surrounding properties and still compatible with the existing and reasonably foreseeable future land use and circulation in the vicinity, then.
I, I actually have been won over to unreasonably by what Julie said, because I think we use significant in, um, sequo. So it, it sort of implies that there is a standard for it that's very clear, and unreasonably seems a little more like commonsensical to me.
So then do it in both.
Right.
Do it in both places.
So you're you're wanting to change, uh, significantly in C to?
Unreasonably.
Unreasonable? No, nor unreasonably detrimental, take out B significantly and replace it with.
Be unreasonable.
Cause we'd like to change that one little section.
No, you say it in both places.
It has to be B unreasonably.
When you say changing in both places.
Yeah, both in the A U P and the C U P. And it may come up again somewhere.
Okay. So the other place was, Gina, was in O five O?
Yes.
I made a note to go find it.
Okay, but it's on page one ninety.
Yeah. Item C.
There's two Cs on one maybe.
Yeah, C under O five O.
Nice, very considerate, yeah. Okay, again, on the conditions of approval, it seems to me we're gonna have ands instead of ors.
You said the and ors, or we took that ands?
Ands, I thought was what we ended up with.
Oh no, we have temporary use permits as the same.
I am just.
Maybe. Oh, we use unreasonably there too. Isn't that nice? So we don't have to change it.
Now, can a conditional use permit, uh, under conditions, if we have a as I recall, we could not, and this is going back to the, uh, the cigar lounge. We could not have a condition that said, um, this uh, will expire as a, or we couldn't, we couldn't have something in there that said we, we're gonna reconsider this six months down the line.
Right. They run with the land. You can require regular reviews if you want.
Okay. But you can't just, and can't just say this permit will expire five years from now.
You'd have to have a, you can say it, but you'd have to have a revocation hearing to get rid of it.
Right, okay.
But you can have renewal dates, which essentially require periodic review. So you can put a date, but actually getting rid of the use will, will require a revocation hearing. Assuming the use has been established.
So two, if if you had a use and we were conditioning it and we wanted to put that it will be renewed every year.
You could do that.
We could do that, would it have to be included in here?
You could, no, you could, if, I think your general ability to impose conditions could require a renewal, a renewal period, but you just need to know that we can't legally get rid of the use without a revocation.
Right.
Uh huh.
Hearing.
Yeah.
I mean, if you wanna put.
Can't expire automatically without the renewal.
Not, yeah.
The renewal is more bring it in front of us so that we look at it again and see if we wanna revoke it.
Yes.
Got it.
But if we wanted to revoke it, we would have to do.
We'd still have to go through the revocation process, it couldn't automatically.
And a lot of times.
Right now.
A lot of times, the idea of having a renewal would be also to collect a fee for the new investig- the annual investigation, so that, the, by saying it needs to be renewed, you have to go to planning ask, and essentially they have to go out and inspect for compliance.
Exactly.
And, yeah.
So you'd wanna use that sparingly.
Right. Or, or there has to be a, like a fee set up for that, I mean, I think the cannabis permits have renewal
Yeah, I just wonder.
If I remember correctly.
If, and somewhere in this general section earlier on that we wanted to address the possibility of renewals, but if we don't need to, that we.
I mean, you could put language in there that says, and it can be. I mean, you could put language in there that says, and it can be for, I mean, I guess it could be for an AUP too. Yeah, there, you could, you could add something that says, um, you know, at the discretion of the reviewing body, renewal period may be required. You know, to, to ensure ongoing compliance or something like that. It basically, instead of having it be enforcement only or complaint-driven enforcement, it creates a vehicle to do proactive inspections.
I don't think it would hurt to have us just have in the common procedures area a description of that so that if it was to come up, people would know that's a possibility.
I can, um, I can write something in there and show it to Gina and Martha.
Great.
Thanks.
Okay.
Are we on temporary use permit?
Yes.
So this is, under applicability, this is a little different than having the tables up there. Approval of a temporary use permit is required for uses or activities specifically identified as needing such a permit in section seventeen point two five, point two two zero, point B.
Where, I'm sorry, where are you?
In the applicability of temporary use permit.
There's two, seventeen point two five, point two two zero, like the point of there are many temporary uses and they list a bunch that you don't need a permit for. Other, I, just a second, I think I've got an easier. Okay. All we needed to say, we need to change is where it says section seventeen point two five, point two two zero, just add point B. And instead of just saying temporary uses as the title of the, of the section, the title of that section is temporary uses requiring a temporary use permit.
Yeah.
Under required findings. A, the proposed use will not unreasonably adversely affect a game property. And then, uh, going on with that sentence. Properties, their owners and occupants or the surrounding neighborhood and will not in any, we want to say other creative, other way to create a new constitution, or can we take out other? Because I mean, you can have something adversely affect without being technically a nuisance.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. You notice under conditions of approval, we drop ands here, ands and ands and ands. Under D, regulation of hours of operation, staffing, permit expiration or other aspects of the use, I'm suggesting maybe we want to put in permit expiration.
What? They're not, yeah, we're not spelling.
D, seventeen point three two, point oh six O, D. Okay. Required findings.
So read what you'd like him to say.
I thought maybe the regulation of hours of operation, comma, staffing, comma, permit expiration or other aspects of the use.
I don't understand how it fits in there.
Well.
Maybe it should be a section of what, statement on itself.
Okay. I, is it just?
It says, there's, there's a catchall, including but not limited to. So if there's something else the director comes up with, they put it in.
So you're saying that the permit would be unlimited time permit?
Yeah, well, that's, it's a temporary use.
I think the temporary use permit is for things that happen like every year, but only for a short period of time, like a seasonal Christmas tree, right? And then it's, if it's a one time, otherwise it might be a special event.
Yeah.
Right, so.
Okay, okay.
And I think we call out, don't we call out some temporary uses in the, um, section that talks about disaster, something or other? I, I'm thinking back. I think we approved a TUP for a temporary sawmill after the Bu fire or log staging or something like that. Had something to do with burnt logs, I remember. Yeah.
So it could be a limited duration.
Right, right.
So maybe that hours of operation, staffing, comma, duration or other aspects of the use.
That's certainly less awkward. Sure.
And I know this is sort of covered, but I feel like sanitation and temporary, um, facilities maybe just should be highlighted because it's something that's going to come up all the time for temporary.
Should that be a part of the, of the trash debris?
Well, it could be.
Either way, it's fine, yeah.
May, maybe just needs an et cetera in there, but I, temporary sanitary facilities are a big deal.
Yeah. Okay, well, yeah, why don't we add, just add that to removal of long trash.
Or to lose.
Yeah, I mean, you could, temporary structures, I suppose, might be, but yeah, wouldn't you have temporary sanitary?
Sanitary facilities?
Yeah. I don't care what word you say.
You're next.
Oh, now, now we might take a break before we attack this next section. What do you guys think, Jorge?
Well, I, I could stick around and then break.
We'd rather do this and then take a break before we talk about limited exceptions.
Well, let's see where we are at about twenty to twelve.
Okay. All right.
You know, I don't think we need to take a break between sections. Okay.
So we want to try to tackle reasonable.
Yes.
Accommodations.
So I have a general comment on this that in, it doesn't seem entirely internally consistent in that most of it talks about it only applying to housing. But there are a couple of places where it sort of implies that it could apply to other uses. And I could see a situation where you had an existing commercial building that wants to put in ramps to improve the accessibility and they are required to under federal law and that that might be something we want to accommodate here. That we could have minimal exceptions for that.
Yeah, but where would that get tuned, Jorge? And I mean, I, I agree with you.
Well, I just think we.
Just broaden the.
We just need to broaden the applicability. Maybe it needs a C that just says refers to commercial uses.
It says use of housing or housing related services or commercial.
Yeah, I, I was just saying, put a C under there, the first two things go kind of reiterate.
Okay.
The housing stuff, the C could just say a request for reasonable accommodation.
I get it, yeah. For access. You want to.
Yeah. Well.
Do you want it to be within the limits of the ADA?
Yes. Well, actually, California Building Code Accessibility Sections.
I mean, I think, I guess my question, just to make sure you're doing what you want to do here, is this is where, you know, we have general rules for commercial buildings and we would require them to comply with the ADA. Do you want, are you asking for?
That's not the issue. Existing buildings are required to comply with the federal accessibility provisions of the ADA. So somebody could be trying to make those changes, which they could be that target of a lawsuit requiring them to make those changes.
So we could say a request for reasonable accommodation by a commercial, by, by the owner of a commercial structure to the extent required to comply with law.
Yes, that's basically.
Okay, because you don't want it to be, well, we want to do this giant slide for people to.
And it's not, and it's only in an existing situation that I see it as a, because if you're building it new, just make it apply.
So a regulation for exist, a request for reasonable accommodation by an existing commercial. What, commercial facility, to the extent required.
To make modifications intended to.
Well, just extent required to comply with state or federal law.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we want to, we want to get it into the state or federal disability law.
Right.
Okay.
Which is the.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Not just any old law.
Right.
Yeah. Because I, a common one is that you have to reduce the number of plumbing fixtures in order to make, so that's an interior thing. But in zoning, it would normally be parking or setbacks to put in a sidewalk or that you have to reduce the number of parking spaces in order to put in the accessible spaces and get them close to the, on an accessible path to the entry.
And we're.
I mean, I, I'm happy to work on wording. I just, this seems so focused on housing.
Yeah. I have under applicability, I imagine that we have a nice definition in here, a person with, this is under seventeen thirty three oh two zero A, second sentence. A person with a disability is a person who has a physical or mental impairment limits or substantially limits one or more major activity, major life activity. That's clear to me. But anyone who was regarded as having this type of impairment, regarded by whom?
I wonder if this is taken though directly from, I, this was written by.
It's from the fair housing.
Okay. Who, this was written by Martha, probably with, um, with mentors, harnesses.
Might be.
Help. It was reviewed by outside, um, council or outside firm.
We ought to put Martha and Martha's with us tomorrow because, you know, and that's, you know, I might regard somebody who's having this type of impairment, but that doesn't mean they can get reasonable accom.
Also, the reasonable accommodation is directly a reference to housing. And so I'm wondering if the commercial industrial might, might go under the waivers that are not called waivers anymore.
Right.
Limited exceptions, that might be the better place for that to go.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, it's just a conceptual thing because usually reasonable accommodation is the person who has the limitation is making that request.
Okay.
Yeah, so anyway.
I don't think, Commissioner Harnish is going to come in with an application because he thinks that somebody has a disability when they, when they.
The language by itself, I mean, I mean, perhaps what we need here is a reference to the source statute or something because any, anyone who was regarded as having this type of impairment or anyone who has a record of this type of impairment, so you have a record, in the past, you were disabled, you recovered, you're no longer disabled, but you have a record of this type of impairment.
Well, because it could happen again, right? Let's say, let's say you have a condition that comes and goes and you're periodically disabled. But I think I'm trying to make sure they include people who maybe don't currently qualify, but have some condition that could lead to a relapse.
That may recur.
Yeah.
But I mean, as, as stated, I guess what I'm, what I'm saying is that I'm hoping that there's some statute we can refer that if this is taken from statutory or regulatory language, maybe we can refer to that for the nuances of.
Yeah, I guess I'll need Martha or Jim Harnish's help on knowing where this came from.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's coming from employment and housing only. Because those are the two places where you can make those requests specific to an individual.
Yeah, but it's just this, the person with disability definition is, it starts off great and then gets broader and broader and broader. So I, I think if there are limitations somewhere else or, or qualifications, we refer to that somewhere else. So, so that's, I guess, something we should bring up with Martha tomorrow.
Actually, I'm thinking that whole thing about the commercial stuff would better fit under limited exceptions, but it will also need more than to make it.
Okay, okay, so Gina, did you just catch that?
Um, no change, but we need to, we need to ask Martha.
Yeah.
About assuming that this language came from a specific statute.
Yeah. And if we're making it up, we, we need to do a better job.
I kind of don't think it's made up. At least not by us.
Yeah, right. So.
Anything else on one ninety seven?
No. Uh, one ninety eight. Number ninety eight, yeah. So seventeen point thirty three point oh three zero.
Oh three?
A, of those on previous, concurrent process. Look on the page before, one ninety seven talks about concurrent processing. So if a request for reasonable accommodation is being submitted in conjunction with an application for another approval and it requires planning, commission, action, it shall be heard and acted upon at the same time. Till we get to B at the top of, near the top of page one ninety eight, says no noticing or public hearing are required for a reasonable accommodation request. I think we need, unless it is being.
Why would you say no additional?
Uh?
No additional noticing or public hearing.
I, I think it's clear if you say unless it is being concurrently processed under section seven point, point through three, point zero three zero A.
Well, I agree.
But there you're noticing the other thing. You're not noticing.
So the question is, are we prohibited by law? So, the question is, are we prohibited by law to specifically notice the reasonable accommodations request?
I have a feeling if it's in here like this, that Jim Harn, somebody wrote this, right? And they probably wrote it because we're not allowed to do.
Providing public notice on the other permit.
I mean, I would entitle the whole thing, additional public noticing and public hearing not required, and just say.
Well, remember, titling doesn't make any difference in the meaningful statute.
No, but now that I'm rereading and thinking about this, I think Julie's suggestion of no additional is probably better than unless, because then it's just included as part of the whole project. And so, it really is no additional noticing, because there's already going to be noticing required.
We're not inviting people to comment and make their positions heard to the extent we're talking about a disability accommodation. I think that's the point.
But the point is there's no noticing required at all if it's being done by the director.
If you have the concurrent processing, people can come in and comment on the reasonable accommodation.
Right, but it's all being noticed as part of the entire.
I'm actually not sure, like, I, I probably, I, I think I might need some citations. I don't know whether people, whether we're allowed to conduct a public hearing on the accommodation piece of it. I don't know the answer to that, because it could turn into a big health, you know, we're, we're talking about somebody's health condition and the extent to which something.
Seems like there's a.
There must be an, you know, so somebody's like, well, no, I, I really can't get up the ramp. And the neighbor goes, yes, you can't, I mean, are we gonna?
Well, exactly, and I'm not sure that we should actually be saying that it should be held concurrently ever, because it should be a private issue, it seems like.
Well, then, then.
The way in which we have this set up now, I think that would still be a determination perhaps of the director.
So.
Why don't we get rid of heard, it shall be acted upon at the same time?
I think, but I thought we were looking back at that, at the concurrent processing provision.
Right.
It should not be concurrent, because it's, this says it shall be heard and acted upon at the same time.
I think, well, I have a feeling, just my gut tells me that state law probably says something like, you can't make people pay extra for, for the reasonable accommodation. Um, I don't, I actually don't know the rules, as I sit here, when it comes to hearings on reasonable accommodations. I would like to believe that there is, that we're not required, or we shouldn't have a hearing about it, but that the director should be thinking about what kinds of accommodations are going to be reasonable. So, if there's two different ways of accommodating it, and one is more intrusive on everybody else than the other, maybe they can pick the one that's less intrusive. So, maybe we just say acted upon, instead of heard and acted upon.
Yeah, it's a, it, it's a good thing that you brought it up.
Just another thing we should ask Martha about tomorrow. I think maybe we'll go through this whole reasonable accommodation.
Right, I, I agree.
So, Gina, you, I don't know if Martha could check in with Jim before tomorrow?
I'm looking to.
To say, to how, to what extent this was just provided by her consultant as being the, the current legal standard, or she might know off the top of her head, but.
So, I'm, I'm not finding a discussion about it in the, um, in the mentee memo.
I mean, the mentee memo was probably just to say, okay, this is all.
Well, I mean, but they got specific about each thing. So, I can sort of. I don't, I don't see that.
Is it really a reasonable accommodation request if it's buried in a project? Or is that?
Wouldn't the law be buried?
I think they would be coming by themselves, if the whole point of doing it is to provide this particular reasonable accommodation.
Well, not many.
But if it requires something else.
I have this project, and it's a part of that.
See, all of this is the planning director. All of this is the planning director. And I, and because of that, I just have a feeling that what B was trying to say is, you, you can, I, I think that, that it's like, you can apply for your reasonable accommodation when you ask for your CUP. The reasonable accommodation piece is going to be dealt with by the planning director. No special hearings or anything else are required. That's what I think it means. I, and I think that they probably put this in here, because we're probably told by the state that we're not allowed to create a whole separate thing, uh, with the, with the, um, the reasonable accommodation. So, to the extent, like, a, a CUP is required, you would be hearing the general CUP, the use, the structure, but if there's some additional accommodation we're making that takes the structure out of its usual context, then that would be done privately with the planning director. That's what I think this is saying.
Well, I, well, that's, you, Martha, uh, I, what we're.
I could see where it could come up, where you're like converting, uh, old motel to affordable housing, and so, but that's not a reasonable accommodation request by an individual. That is a request by the developer. So, then it would just be held as part of it. I'd like to be able to modify this to make it, I need to make, you know, whatever percentage of mine units accessible, this.
And this also could be in lieu of a very, I think it's also probably in lieu of a variance to the extent there's a setback issue on a ramp, et cetera, yeah.
No, that's what I assumed it was, but it's interesting that under applicability, at least A, is a request for reasonable accommodation may be made by any person with a disability,
Right.
their representative or other entity.
To the planning director.
Well, that, that would be, I think, a good thing to put in there.
I suspect that's what it is.
So, you think maybe that there's no appeal from the planning directors?
I have a feeling that there, if there's an appeal, it's not a public one. That's my guess.
Well, I think it depends, because B does sort of imply that it could be a developer who's making the request.
Yeah.
In order to get out ahead of the, the, the personal requests for reasonable accommodation, so that he's already putting.
See, I have a feeling, I wouldn't be surprised if the rules around reasonable accommodation exist only for homeowners, people living in their homes. You're thinking, you're thinking more creatively about, about the commercial context. They probably need a variance.
Exactly.
That's, and so, I don't know.
Trying to find.
And if that's the case, I don't think we can weave the commercial into this.
No, I don't think, I think the commercial belongs in the next section. But I do think housing, like apartments, does fall under.
Right.
And that could still be brought forward by a developer, not a person with a disability, because he's required to accommodate people with disabilities in his.
But I have a feeling that's, I bet you this is not, that that situation isn't covered by the laws that address this, I mean, I'm, I'm speculating.
Well, this is also talking about employment law, though. It, it says it right at the beginning, so.
We have to find out where it came from.
Yes, we think, or, or, then tank ourselves all up in.
Yeah, because, I mean, the, the concurrent processing, uh,
Yeah.
provision doesn't make.
Sense.
Consistent with your concept of, that this is a private thing with the planning director. Because, I mean, and even talks about it, shall be heard and acted upon at the same time in the same manner as that application.
Right.
So, uh, but just, instead of putting it all off into, well, I mean, another concern I have is, uh, under the required findings. I have a, an under C, that the conditions imposed, if any, are necessary to further a compelling public interest.
We hear that.
Okay, well, that I didn't have as much problem with this. And represent the least restrictive means of furthering.
You know what? I think this is the equal protection stuff. This is coming from constitutional law somehow. That, that's the standard for some of the, um, stand, applying a standard of review, we're treating them differently than others. And so, if somebody doesn't get, I, I, I can tell from how that's written, that that's about.
There's a flag.
That's right, that that's about, that that's about, so, if I don't need a reasonable accommodation, but I want my, I want to have a ramp with a set, a setback, I want to have a separate unit treatment. This is, this is justifying why we're treating the disabled differently than other people.
Well, and look at D, which is talking about.
Yeah.
Religious.
Religious, so, so, you're right, this is all.
This constitutional law.
Yeah.
And, and does, does the word, and, and C, least restrictive means of further.
That is part of a constitutional test for whether, when you can justify treating a certain group of people differently than others.
So, the, the, the conditions are least restrictive, I think.
I think we would, could, could better edit this if we understood.
Work.
What issue we're addressing here, and if it is private access for an individual, we can talk about it tomorrow.
Yeah, okay, but I think it's good that we talked about it.
Right.
We're, we're sneezing.
Okay, I think with, it's a fifteen minute break time.
Fifteen minute break time, that's what I say.
I agree.
You want officially?
Yes, um, so, let's return at twelve fifteen from our lunch break, so we're adjourned until twelve fifteen. See everybody back then, and now I'm going to turn this.
Okay.
All right, so, planning commission is back in session after lunch, and we are going to pick up our review of the zoning code update with page two hundred, chapter seventeen point three four, limited exceptions.
This might seem excessive, but.
Yeah. I think I have the same one circled, so.
Under seventeen point three four point oh two oh A, I know we've just said on the purpose, under the purpose provision, that we're talking about removal of existing development, et cetera, but I think we should start that with the A, with as to existing development, comma, relief from. People might just jump there and think that they're talking about new development.
So, this actually is going to refer back to our last item.
Mm-hmm.
Is this really our intention, is for limited exceptions to only be to provide forgiveness to existing conditions?
Originally, it wasn't, but that's how you recrafted this chapter.
So, if.
That's what we did last.
If we want to wrap in the things that we can't neatly fit into the previous section, this might be the spot. I have so many comments on this, so, I don't know, I'll let you guys start.
No, no, why don't you, please.
Please.
I just have a problem with the whole chapter, I guess. I don't understand why we would have a chapter only to tell people that it's easier to get forgiveness than permission.
Agreed, and then, and again, that's not how it was originally drafted.
But it was originally drafted in a way that.
You thought was a little too generous. It was trying to take things from the variance.
Well, and I, yeah, I think that was the struggle, if I recall, is, you know, what is the difference between the waiver and the variance? And where do we find the, you know, the magic medium, and what is too much versus not enough, and.
So, it seemed, I, I still see that there is a place for the limited exceptions that might allow the planning director to approve very, very minor exceptions. But I.
Do we say in here that it, I, I never, see, I never thought about this section as preventing the plan and application for, for something that hasn't been built yet.
Well, either did I, but when I saw this, I realized, and I thought, well, a more appropriate thing is for a very, very minor exception, like, there are times when I have been in requesting a variance in, not necessarily here in Calders, but other places, literally for three inches of a corner.
Mm-hmm.
Because I just couldn't quite make it work because of existing constraints on the site. It seems really silly to take up.
But where is that, where is that prohibited?
That's not in, that's not in here. So, I'm, I'm saying, my problem here is that I don't think we have adequately defined the purpose of this chapter.
So, you would have it cover more than existing development?
Yes, and, and I see the existing thing, but I see the existing thing as being truly problematic here in that people would just say, I, right, didn't lay my house out very well, and now I'm five feet into the setback.
Right.
But it's okay, because I'm just going to make an application here.
I mean, it makes, it makes perfect sense if you're looking at something that was built, say, fifteen, twenty years ago.
Something, where, where does it say this only applies to existing development?
Well, how about.
And the first sentence. From the stripped up application of this title in unique situations, blah, blah, blah.
Oh.
To avoid unreasonably requiring removal of existing.
Oh, okay.
Two oh A, it says, limited exceptions are not available in the case of new building.
Oh, okay.
Rebuilds or additions.
Okay.
And I, I see it, I can, but I don't, something about it rubs me in all the wrong ways.
What, so what would somebody do if they were three inches off, just let it fly?
When they made a mis.
Yeah, yeah, if somebody made a mistake and their, their house is in a slightly wrong place.
And I think nobody knows ninety-nine percent of the time, and nothing happens until they go to do an addition or something, and it's discovered. Typically, now, it's just, is what it is, and they go back to business, you know? Or, so, I know that they are just quietly worked out. So, I don't, but it seems like having this entire chapter devoted to how we're going to tell you it's okay that you did this thing that you weren't supposed to do.
Or somebody else did it, but you're in it.
Well, right, and so, I think that when you purchase something, and now you discovered there's a problem, and you, in order to do anything else to the building, you need to square that away.
So, where would you incorporate the necessary elements in another section or another chapter?
I just think there might be other uses for this, limited exceptions, and that this shouldn't sound as though we're, we just don't want you to have to ever tear anything down. If you blatantly did it on purpose, I, I don't want anyone to tear anything down either.
Well, it is, I mean, it's not to exceed ten percent of the requirement.
And then what, are we going to make it burnt down?
Right.
Yeah.
But we don't.
Well, I, I, I agree with you, but what I'm saying is, in order to eliminate this as an official chapter, to give it so much legitimacy, where is it in the, uh, in this that we can incorporate it so that we eliminate such that it is not going to be abusive?
I just wonder if, I mean, is this the wink, wink, nod, nod, um, sort of, uh, that things, things, I don't know, this should be said even at a public meeting, but that it, things, important things get taken care of, unimportant things, uh, slide by. And it's, I mean, which I, I think is what you're saying the current practice is. And, uh, um, and as an attorney, I hate to say, why codify something that's working? Then this current system is working. And it, I think what, what the concern is, is that you're going to get some, a planning director or somebody who is. a planning director or somebody who is really a firebrand about nitpicking about things, and will start calling people on stuff that hasn't been the subject of any action.
Well, what I can't see is why there's process, because do we really foresee that someone's going to come in here and say, whatever their situation is, and not only going to say no. So what happens when we say no, and we deny their request for a limited exception? What are their options?
They're going to say, I'll never go to that department again.
They're just going to leave it as non-conforming, and that's, yeah, exactly. Right, they're not, so I don't know what we're actually achieving necessarily. Although I do think there are plenty of real errors, mistakes that get made and that you don't want to punish anybody for, and you want to just resolve it.
Right.
But I'm just wondering if this is the right way to do it? And are there, like we talked about, are there other things? So would maybe apply to an existing building, but where you're going to let them build something, they're going to come to us in advance, and we are going to allow them to build something that is a minor exception? Because it makes sense, because it allows something that is beneficial to everybody, like providing more accessible housing.
Without going through the full waiver, I'm not waiver, variance.
Variance process, yeah.
Right, because remember, we have specific findings that we have to make.
So I'm thinking, can I suggest some language that may work?
Yes, of course.
Okay, the purpose of this chapter is to provide a mechanism for site-specific relief from the strict application of this title. In unique situations, where strict application of dimensional requirements of property development standards would unreasonably require removal of the existing development, or would unreasonably preclude new development?
I think almost, other than unreasonably preclude new development, I think is technically correct by our description of development, but I think.
New construction?
Well, I was going to, trying to limit it to improve, I think it has to be like an addition or modification.
Modification of, is this, or preclude, a modify.
Yes.
A modification, just.
Because I think if it's brand new, you just.
So removal of or modification of existing? Okay, so I would add site-specific before relief to make it clear that this is not a bowl, a general.
Right.
And then we would just say removal of, removal or modification of existing. And then we'd get rid of that sentence in twenty A, limited exceptions not available. Or we could keep it, and, and we just get rid of additions.
But we're still talking about, we're still talking about existing development, modification.
Right. But so additions would come off this, limited exceptions are not available in the case of new buildings.
Or demolitions, rebuilds.
Rebuilds, yeah.
And then we'd get rid of the word, and we would put a period there.
And with demolition, slant, rebuilds, that means something where you are tearing it down and rebuilding.
In its entirety, right?
But, yeah. What about, okay, no, that's okay. So we're still talking about existing development.
Right. But then, as we go on, you know, how do we find the bright line between when you need a variance, when a waiver?
When you can't make the findings.
Right, but then that doesn't mean you'll necessarily get a.
You might not get it, right.
Yeah, I think, then when I read the required findings here, I, I don't think they make any sense. The proposed limited exceptions will be at least as effective in achieving the objectives of the base standard. I don't think you could say that.
I was, I was going to suggest would be, will be, let's see.
I think the idea is like safety, I think we want, we don't want to do it if we're going to somehow shortchange safety or nuisance, that kind of a thing.
Okay, how about will not be significantly less effective?
Right, that's what I was thinking. I mean, clearly, it doesn't meet the requirement, so.
Right.
And it was either unintentional, or it just can't be avoided, so.
So would that be okay? The proposed limited exception.
I think that's the right direction, I just think, like, by the time we, like, look at, there are no alternatives to the requested limited exception that could provide an equivalent level of benefit to the applicant with less potential detriment to surrounding owners and occupants or the public. I, it's already there. I mean, in the way it was written, so doesn't really matter what the alternative is. But, but with the new change, this might make a little bit better sense.
Yeah, that, that one makes sense, I think.
I think you might.
Again, the density thing, in C.
Yeah.
Or result in a change of land use or density that would be inconsistent with the requirements of this title. And against, well, of course, it would be inconsistent with the requirements of this title, or we wouldn't be getting a limited exception.
No, that's, that goes.
Not for land use or density, it couldn't be changed by this. I think we have that same language again. I mean, I, but I think it's all back to what we were talking about before when we say it wouldn't be unreasonably detrimental, or all those sorts of things. We, it's just hard to come up with what those required findings are. It might be, this is the, because really, the, the major finding is going to be saying, well, it is what it is, but it's already there.
And, and it's, and it's not really bad.
And it's not that bad.
That's what, not, not significantly less effective is what I was trying to get at.
Right, but now, if we're going to allow certain additions and modifications, then you need to say this is the least impactful solution to the problem. So I, it seems like we need examples or something that says it's for these sorts of things, not just because I want a bigger master bath.
Yeah, by adding the modification, we, we are compounding our problems, I think.
Yeah, I think, but we could say, for instance, providing increased accessibility. Or.
If you get into that list problem.
Yeah, I know, examples. I just feel like we need some way to give people a hint that this is not just, well, I, I really want this.
Well, it says, in unique situations, where strict application would unreasonably require removal. And so if the planning director thinks that they could reasonably meet this, there isn't something unique to the site that makes a normal use of, that's allowed, you know? There, there, I, I feel like we made it, the, the purpose statement.
Better, because it's not just preventing removal, it's also to allow them to improve the usability.
And by adding site-specific, plus the word unique, we can't just say, it, it, there has to be something going on in particular to an otherwise allowable use with respect to that site.
Well, but by putting in the or modification language, we're just talking about what otherwise unreasonably require removal or modification. We're not permitting modifications using.
Yes, we are.
Yeah.
That's what we're talking about.
Well, I, I, that's what I thought we were talking about, but then.
Well.
We, we haven't, right now, the modification is only as a part of the phrase would unreasonably require removal or modification of existing, the, the, the requirements, the current requirements would require unreasonable modification or unreasonable.
And no, I'm, I'm saying that we want to allow modification in these site-specific, unique circumstances.
I don't think that's how it reads, though. I, I said, I think I agree with Tim, that doesn't, when I read that first sentence, that's not how it reads to me.
Oh, no, not now, at all. That's my objection, is I don't think, if our only purpose is not to require people to remove something, I'm not sure what we're doing here. I think we need a different situation. I think that it, that our purpose in having a waiver was that sometimes you can't make the findings for variance.
Right.
But the waiver seems reasonable. And certainly, allowing a commercial building to make themselves accessible to people with disabilities is a reasonable thing, and, and if it's minimally impactful, like they're going to lose a parking space in order to put in accessible parking spaces, or they're going to encroach in the front setback a foot in order to get the ramp in there, whatever it is. Those seem like places that a waiver is appropriate.
Well, and that's kind of how we had it written to start with.
To start with. I do think, I do think you and Martha did what we asked you to do.
She did.
Thank you very much.
Well, I think it was because it was kind of a mishmash of, it was still tied to this other thing, the reasonable accommodation previously, right?
I don't think so. It was just kind of a, it just seemed a very broad.
Yeah.
Broad provision to avoid the code.
So what do we want to achieve here? I mean, maybe this is going to take some more work, I think.
Well, this, this is the problem, we want to.
We're not sure.
We want to achieve.
We're not sure what we want to achieve.
We want to achieve what's really happening now in the real world, where.
Right.
Unimportant things are not made a big deal out of. You know, and, and I, I see a point in trying to codify what the real world is now.
Right.
It's a problem of.
So I saw it as having potentially two purposes. One is to allow people to make modifications to existing buildings to make them more usable, more functional, to extend their life with very minor encroachments into setbacks, or, you know, maybe it's a height limitation, I, I don't know what it is. Like, they want to add a chimney, and that's going to put them over the height limitation. So, and then secondly, to potentially review an existing situation that somehow got built out of compliance, and give the, that planning director an opportunity to get it approved and possibly add some conditions to it to offset whatever their impact is.
I almost, I, I, there's probably, it feels like, why don't we just write that flexibility into the affirmative zoning code, instead of having something where we're saying, we don't like the variance laws, that we're trying to find a way around it.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, if we're going to stick to this, it seems to me, the required findings will need to be, there's a really good reason for this. You know, I mean, that, as far as benefiting the public welfare.
Exactly, something above and beyond just.
The UBS factor.
Yeah.
You're saying it can go where, Julie?
What was that?
You're saying it can go where?
I mean, I was just thinking that we could write the zoning code itself. It, it just looks better to just say, in, when we have the performance standards for each of the zones, to have a section that says, in a unique site-specific situation, to have some language that, as part of the zoning code, as opposed to having this whole exceptions, right? Because the whole concept is, we're supposed to have a uniform application of the zoning code, and that's where all of this comes from, it comes from equal protection, equal, all of that. So we should just like build in some.
We could just say something like, a statement like, waivers or minor discrepancies or minor exceptions may be available on a site-specific basis.
And in no case up to ten percent, or something like that. Because I, we do have to have a limit, I think, in order to.
Do we want to put that in the variances? I mean, as a variance to the variance?
I wouldn't put it there.
It would be in the base zoning.
Yeah, that's what I, right.
And we could even limit it to in.
I can come up, let me, let me.
With existing structures on site or something.
Let me, let me come up with something that is a drug.
You still want to limit to existing structures?
I would still lean into existing structures, because I think otherwise it opens it up a little too broadly.
We have, again, we don't want to be challenged on.
Right.
We do, this is one of the few areas of land use where it's.
Finish, finish your sentence.
Where, where it's state, state law requires us to make specific findings before we make exceptions to zoning.
We don't want the mayor's son.
And I, and I, and I, I think that if we write the actual zoning code to be flexible enough so that it's uniformly flexible, we have an easier time than having a section where we make findings and have to apply for something.
And if it's only a boundary, circumstance.
Right, I, yeah, let me.
I think not having this chapter at all would probably make me feel better. I feel like it brings too much attention to it some.
Well, that's, that's why I'm saying, I think we can write something, write flexibility into the base zones in a way that would achieve.
Would you like?
Yeah, I'll, I'll try it.
Thank you very much.
That's fine.
This was my most problematic. Do you have other things that you, that you think might be helpful? That you wanted to bring up in that section?
Now that we're, now that we're getting away from it completely, uh, no. I'm writing my journey.
Are we going to jump right to variances, then?
I think, I think so, that's how I put Carol. Okay.
But Gina, thank you for all your work.
Yes. I mean, I thought it was a valiant effort to try to come up with something.
I mean, I think we can take a lot of that and what was intended and how it was written, and just consolidate it and put it someplace else, so that it doesn't, there's not an application process.
Yes.
You know, it's.
Working at it.
It would be like a staff decision by the planning director, which could be appealed. And we would either say, no, that fits, or, no, you need a variance.
That, that, that.
Yeah.
Hard line.
I think we can, I think we can do it.
Because I could just see staff going, I don't know, is it, is it this, or is it a variance? And, I mean.
No, I think we can come up with what you have to look at, and how it can't be something that would apply to every, there has to be something about the project of the site, right? It can't just be.
And an existing.
Right, yes.
Structures and constraints.
Right.
But what will happen to your provisions about the commercial property?
It would fit there.
It would fit right in. But I like the affirmatively, instead of trying to fit it into the parallel process that we have with everything else. I have high hopes that between them, we'll come up with.
I like these types of drafting challenges, I wish I had time to do nothing but those. This is my favorite type of work, so.
Well, you can just tell all your other clients that you're just.
Oh, yes.
You've got better things to do.
Let's all, maybe we can all send a petition to Sarah that I should be like.
Or you could have just applied for the planning director's position.
I think that might be a pay cut.
That'd be fun, interesting, interesting.
Interesting, they would not have me over there. I don't know how to read maps, so that would be a problem.
Okay, variances.
Okay, the purpose. Is variances, can they be applied for for existing? Can they be applied for for existing?
Yeah.
Did we remove the as-built?
I may, I just need some education here, I think. Uh, under the purpose, uh, intended to provide a mechanism for relief from strict application is titled. Where it would deprive the property owner of privileges enjoyed by similar properties. Because of the subject properties. Unique and special conditions.
So.
This is based on physical limitations. I mean, I can even use some of that language in the general flexibility section. But distinguish it based on exactly how minor we're talking about.
So right, right now in code, we allow for two different types of variances. The variance that you get before a building permit and the variance that you get after the structure. It's an as-built variance, but the problem is, is you have to make the same findings.
There's also a building official variance application that's different.
Which is way different. Relative to fire and life.
That's a whole other.
Firelife safety setbacks, those thirty-foot setbacks.
I know that there the variance.
Findings are the same as um, as a. Uh, variance that you would apply for before the construction. And and that's really, I mean, in most cases, you can't make the finding and and it's just the fact that it's there.
So variances, the re- the state law part of it, where the state law sort of preempts us. Is really specific to zoning and it it came down to, it came out of. Uh, discriminatory decision-making in applying the zoning code. So it is not. That's that's where it comes from. Um, so it has to do with things like. Stan- whatever we would write specifically in the zoning code. If it's something for a building permit. I don't know what other, what might be in the state building code, but the variance law, as I read it, only applies to to this. Oh, to the zoning code, to title, yeah.
And we struggled with the as-built thing because, again, you just feel like you have no choice anyway. And you can't do the findings. Was there an alternative? Yes.
Well, and and in all honesty, the majority of them. The majority of the as-built um, situations that we're talking about. Happened many, many years ago. The properties have been sold multiple times. And now you've got a new owner that's looking to purchase the property and they realize, oh. You know, the house that was built thirty-five years ago is sitting in a front setback. And they're like, ooh, I don't want to touch that. You gotta fix it, right? I want something that says, I'm not gonna be liable for this and it's gonna be okay and I don't have to otherwise fix it. And so that's usually when people come to us and ask for an as-built variance.
And that's gonna come up um, when we get into the required findings. Which has the thing that says uh, it's necessary to prevent a physical hardship. Which is not of the applicant's own actions or the actions of a predecessor in interest.
But you have to make all of those findings.
But I mean. In your example, the predecessor in interest built the building in the wrong place.
Right, but that's only one finding.
But it's all all these findings must be made. So if it's. It seems to, I I have a problem with that and that the the. The predecessor in interest did something that the current owner is trying to remedy.
Right.
Uh, and this finding would make it impossible to do.
Right.
And if that finding has to be made, then we haven't satisfied the findings.
Right, well, and that's and that's the problem and. And they have gotten a building permit and it was, you know, thirty-five years ago. So, I mean, uh, at that point, you know.
I'm going to have a problem with that, but I.
Yeah.
Well, I don't think that as-built variance needs to stay if we're able to work out this limited exception thing and have. It cover that without looking like it's a blanket forgiveness proposal.
Well, I think the if it's more than we, if it's more than ten percent.
But then what are we going to do with those places? I, that's my. Well, I guess then they'd have to apply for variance and then we're gonna say, well, we can't make the findings. Right stuck back where we are right now.
Right.
I think that if it's more than. I don't know about the ten percent, if that's the number, but perhaps. We could do it under that section if we were able to craft a mitigation that makes up or whatever. Like if it's too close to the front and there's not enough room to park a car in front of the. You know, they got, they measured from the wrong spot, so their driveway is not long enough and. So maybe there's a way for them to redesign that parking sideways or, you know. I don't know about that. I I don't think we should be getting involved in making deals with the next door neighbor. I've always objected to that, but. But maybe there's something that can be done to to mitigate that impact on the street or on the.
I mean, there's also due diligence when you buy a property to to look and see whether.
That brings me to my variance thing is that we see people coming in here. And they bought a small piece of property or a piece of property that visibly has no. Easy building site on it and then they want a variance. But I'm not sure that's what the variance was for. You pay less for that piece of property because it's smaller or it has these. Challenges.
Right.
I don't think that actually meets the variance requirement, but that's what we hear all the time.
But if you look at the findings and that almost is is exactly the scenario. Because they're, you know, unique.
I mean, I think there's.
I mean, it's not like it was unique and. It had, it it's.
Well, maybe you have discretion to deny for other reasons.
Well, but we don't.
Yeah.
I mean, I've watched it over and over again because. I I think that in those cases. Where there is an option for them to redesign, there they can get something reasonable on there.
We also.
They just can't get the design they wanted from the start. That's where I have the problem, not that, yeah, I think.
I mean, you wanna disincentivize people deliberately, you know, buying and selling. Lots that are bad for building line so that they can take advantage of. What we're doing in the code.
We had that property in Tulok.
And we've seen that those in that area more than once and I do think where neighbors have been allowed to. Like, in some areas in Tulok, all the neighbors are in front setback. But now with the variance requirements, that's not really, you know, they they couldn't build within their setbacks in the right. But once the neighbors have all done it, we used to say in the olden days, a a variance was just automatic. Everybody else is in.
If nobody objected to the variance.
Right, years ago and.
Right.
Now you can't make the findings for that. So it's like, almost like in those areas, we should just change that setback.
That's what I'm saying, changing, if we should be rezoning a parcel based on its buildability. Like, we should reset, we should rezone it.
Well, or change the requirements for that whole section, so it applies to everybody.
And we've done that before.
Right.
You know, after the creation of a subdivision. People are then forced to come in and apply for variances and then we're kind of like, re, oh, wow, oh. Well, you've got, you know, all these embankments or hillsides.
Exactly.
You know, you've got to serious topography issues and slope easements, whatever, and and. And so then we've gone in and actually done a blanket variance on the entire subdivision. To to reduce those uh, that front setback.
Right.
Specifically.
Anyway. I think. We're kind of. The variance is what it is, right? Most of this comes out of.
I those are, so I I don't know if those are minimum findings and you can add more reasons to deny a variance or whether. Those are just the findings you need to grant a variance.
I think they are just the findings needed and I'm not necessarily trying to make it harder for somebody to get a variance. I'm just saying that it's sometimes hard to make the findings and sometimes. The point is you bought this parcel that is unique. And you're supposed to be coming up with a creative solution to it, not just assuming that a variance will be given to you. So that you can have the same large house that your neighbor has that bought a parcel twice as big. I I just, there seems to be a conflict there. It's another thing when, you know, look. There's drainage easements that cropped up later that crossed the property or, you know. Somebody changed the flood elevation. You know, after the parcel was created, now there's very little parcel.
You're concerned about the person that comes inside, paid hundred thousand dollars for the property and you say I can't build the house I want.
Then I say, you can build a house, though, you just. You might have to get creative about what it is.
I have a question under the, I'm gonna get that specific. Applicability, uh, the O two O section. Variances may be granted to vary or modify dimensional and performance standards. But may not be granted to allow uses or activities. That this title does not authorize for a specific lot or site. Now, use is defined as, back in the back. The purpose for which a site or structure is arranged, designed, intended, constructed, erected. Moved, altered, or enlarged, or for which either a site or a structure is or may be occupied or maintained. It's. That seems a lot broader than what this.
That's why we added or activities. We can get rid of uses and just say activities.
It still makes sense to me.
It just, you know, I I'd say get rid of uses or. Just to granted to allow activities that this title does not authorize in a specific lot or site. Because the the definition of use is so broad.
So I think that's the point. It's not allowing you to change uses that are allowed. It's all, it's four dimensions. Basically.
Okay. But if you can't get a variance.
You can get your zone changed.
Yeah, okay, that's so that's it.
Or conditional use permit or administrative use permit, those are the. The options in that case.
I see, so the title does not authorize. Means without special.
Without a concurrent application for that other.
Okay, now now you're, now you're making sense.
But I think it's because you read this and uses or activity sounds like. Not a use and a land use, but just a word.
Yeah. Okay. So. May not be granted, so. So. So if if it's something that you could get a conditional use permit for. Then. Then you'd also get a variance.
The variance wouldn't take care of your use problem. The variance would only take care of your setback or height or number of parking spaces or something like that.
But that's included in purpose for which a site or structure is arranged, designed, et cetera.
Right, so if if the setbacks. There's. Variances are to allow. Really for the geometry to be modified to make it work on this site that has special constraints.
Okay, and then what's performance standards?
Performance stand, performance standards are parking, setbacks, heights. Those are performance standards.
That's that's what we have this whole section on, right?
Right.
Okay.
So I think that's, they're just trying to distinguish what what a variance is for, but some kind of use permit is for.
I mean, okay, talk about a front setback then. Isn't that? The, since use is the purpose for where the society structure is arranged. Wouldn't that be included in that?
Guess I'm just not understanding what the.
What my problem is, uh, it's it's. I seem to read a uh, conflict between the. The first part of the sentence, what it can be, what variance can be used for. If it may not be granted to allow.
Where?
Oh, in applicability. May not be granted to allow uses or activities that this title does not authorize. I I I just, I mean, the arrangement of a of a structure would include setbacks.
Yes, and that's a performance standard, so it can be used to modify that.
But under definition of use, the purposes for which a site or structure is arranged, designed, intended.
We say or activity.
Under the term um, definitions. Page two.
I mean, maybe the problem is with.
Yeah, that might be the. Use.
What about with use classification? That's not gonna work, nevermind.
Well, I think underneath it, it it pretty much makes it clear.
Right.
So you can't change your use, you can't use a variance to change the allowed uses on a parcel.
But if one of the allowed uses is the, how the structure is arranged.
No, that's not, but that's not the way that term is being used.
Okay, I mean, then this, I I just need education.
Yeah.
I think the sentence is beautiful.
Beautiful.
I think adding or activities captures the things you're concerned about, to the extent somebody decides to harp on the definition.
Right. I think so too.
All right. I I'll regal it.
We're we're definitely gonna be done by three, Gina.
I'm putting a big O K there so I don't come back and start.
Okay, was there anything else on that page?
Two oh four. Okay, let's see, we're in the required findings.
Yeah.
Wait. No, we're not. Oh, sorry.
We're in the midst of required finding. Now, I I looked at. Government Code Section six five nine oh six, which is what we're trying to comply with here. And. It gives examples, is it, what, an A. Here there are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applicable to the property involved. Now, from Government Code Section six five nine oh six. We could put examples in, including size, shape, topography, location, or surroundings. That do not apply generally to property in the vicinity. Then. So I'll stop right there. Does that get too wordy to put in an example? It is from the section.
You read that right out of uh, Government Code?
Yeah, Government Code six five nine oh six.
Six five nine oh six?
Six five nine zero six.
Oh, I have no problem with duplicating the wording.
Okay. Then it seems to me. Instead of going on in that, in A with, and that the granting of a variance uh, will not constitute a grant of a special privilege, I make that B instead.
Yeah, so there's just.
So you have, and A with identical zone.
Um, we lost.
Okay. Uh, top of page two oh four.
Okay.
The first sentence. Ended with vicinity and identical zone, period.
Period.
And then put, I guess these, and B. The granting of a variance will not constitute a granting of a special privilege inconsistent with the limitation. Everything we have there.
So you have five findings, but they're just separating it into two. Okay.
Ah, but I give them a six.
No, I figured, but.
Then C. C would be the strict application of the zoning ordinance would deprive the property involved of privileges enjoyed by other property in the vicinity and under identical zoning classification. That's also.
Is that also in Government Code?
Yeah, it's also in six five nine.
You didn't just make that up.
I did.
It came out of the purpose. I mean, it has the exact, that's the wording in the purpose.
But.
So you wanted to say, one of the findings would be the strict application of this title would deprive the property owner of privileges enjoyed by similar properties because of the subject property's unique and special.
Well, no, I take it actually, it's very close, but language from six nine oh six. So the split. Same point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then. Then D has the problem of the actions of a predecessor in interest. And I don't know.
Is that in the code?
In, in six nine five nine oh six, no.
It's not in there?
We probably added that to create our as-built, um, situation finding that related to that.
But it doesn't, to me, there are so many things that, you know, the, the predecessor in interest.
Yeah.
Yeah, how far back? So, and what? Do we wanna, would we wanna say the granting of the application is necessary to prevent a hardship, leaving out physical?
But we don't want it to be an economic, I mean.
It only applies to physical.
Yeah, okay, which is not of the applicant's own actions, and I would end it right there. I mean, really, what you want is not the responsibility of the applicant, and be blamed on the applicant. Really, is, is what we're trying to say. I don't know what the best language of that is.
And do we need it?
Well, you don't wanna have somebody subdivide a lot that is inadequate and then say, oh, this is inadequate for me to build it.
I, I, I understand that's why it's there, I'm just. So maybe it's not necessary, maybe B is not necessary if we're not going to include as-built variances? Is that what we're?
We need to have everything required by six five nine. Yeah. Yeah.
So should we eliminate?
Yes. Now, uh, now, there are other sections around six five nine oh six that I didn't copy.
Right.
Not so confident.
It seems like maybe we should get at least the identical requirements from. Six five nine oh six.
Right.
We should get those in there first, and whatever we add should be at the bottom. If we decide that we're gonna keep B. So are, are C, D, which are now D, E at least, are those ins? Is that wording?
The.
In six five nine oh six?
The, this, what I'm suggesting is C is, is in six five nine oh six.
Oh, so you've got, so you're saying C and D don't exactly match either?
We, we've added, we've, we've split A into A and B.
Right.
Then there was a new C.
And there's questions whether or not we need the current B.
The current, D is in dog?
B is in boy.
Oh, B is in boy.
Right? They're saying that current B is not in Government Code.
That's in there. The strict application of the zoning ordinance deprives such property of privileges enjoyed by the other property.
That's what we're putting in C, in the new C.
No, the grant, the granting of the application is necessary to prevent the physical hardship.
But I, I think.
For which it was not.
I think it's fine to say that it's not this guy, and that it has.
Well, that only i- applies if we're including as-built variances. Are we going to then reinclude?
No, it could be the size of the lot. He wants to build a house that doesn't touch it.
Okay. Well.
What shape?
I don't know too many property owners that actually were responsible for creating the property that.
And I, I don't. If thus, it would be very easy to make the finding. Anyway, I don't, I don't think it's gonna be a hard finding to make.
No.
But if you have somebody come in who purposely created the problem.
Okay.
I, I think it's a good thing to have it in there.
But we're saying that B is not currently enumerated in Government Code six five oh six, right? As a finding, so if we include that, then we wanna throw that onto the end? Right. Let's, let's take care of the legal regarding pieces first. Before we go on, I, I, I just Googled this and this, um. Says the wording that we were talking about granted to allow uses or activities. There is better wording right here in six five nine oh six that we could steal maybe.
Okay. Right, and then certainly, it's, uses or activities are, is right there, so I'm, I mean, in mind what my problems from before could have been solved by, by reading in six five.
Six five nine oh six also says the provisions of this section shall not apply to conditional use permits. Which means maybe, maybe we can require conditional use permit for certain changes. I can't tell from my, the version on my phone, whether when it says this section, it's a subsection, or if it's all of six five nine oh six.
Six five nine oh six has three paragraphs.
Right, are they enumerated A, B, and C?
No.
Oh, okay, 'cause yeah, I didn't see any of that here either, which is kind of funny.
Yeah, it seemed very.
It's very weird, okay.
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 I'll look it up.
So maybe that's saying we can, for anything that doesn't fit into this, we just require.
I. Well, you know, it's, that's the same thing we have here, it's just the wording's a little cleaner, I think. But I don't think we necessarily make it clear that we, that there, that a use permit is op, is an option if you can't make the findings, right? Is that what you're saying, Julie?
I mean, I, I wanna look at the case law under it, but I mean, it looks like, it kind of looks like it's saying that the state law, that, like, we have the option of approving a conditional use permit if you can't make.
No, that, I mean, it's saying the same thing we're, we, we're talking about, the. I thi, I think what they're saying is that a variance can't take care of a problem that you actually need a conditional use permit for. That's, and that's the same thing we were trying to say here.
Where, where do you see the section saying?
It's under, the last sentence of the third paragraph, at least, is showing up on my phone.
Okay.
And I'm hoping I have the current version on my phone.
Shall not apply, you know, look at that. That's kind of clear, isn't it?
It is.
I don't think you need the last sentence, just muddies the issue. The provisions of this section shall not apply to conditional use permits. You don't need that.
Right.
Not trying to apply it to use permits, but.
Yeah.
But, yeah, authorized by the zoning regulations governing the parcel property. I think that's what you were trying to make clear back here.
Yeah, I mean, my concern before about uses or activities, it's, by the wayside.
Cause it's right here.
Yeah, cause it's there in this section.
Okay.
I do think we need to have something, a whole thing people responsible for their connivances.
So I do. I keep saying. In here. Where this, this sort of prescribes, the state law seems to prescribe when you are allowed to grant a variance, but I don't know if that means you can't add additional restrictions if you wanted to.
Yeah, no, I mean, you, you have to have these things.
Right.
Should be granted only, well, I don't know what it says, it should be granted only when.
It does say it has to be size, shape, topography, location, or surroundings. So it is all physical.
Right.
And it, and this probably would not fit something where we're looking at the use, like making it more accommodating to
Right.
disabilities, we're, we're, that, this is not gonna work for that. Yeah.
No, that's why I think that fits in that limited exception.
Right. Well, we'll have to find it. Making that work.
And are, the.
Although it is the physical limitations that, it's just.
But it, they're saying including size, shape, topography, location, and surrounding.
Those are the constraints, right?
Yeah, those are.
Yeah.
But. I think you could come up with other special circumstances applicable to the property.
Right.
Well, it's, if not for a variant, for a variance, you're limited to that list in the first paragraph. What we're trying to do is find some exceptions that would not that would not be treated by a court as de facto variance, where we might have some room to be flexible directly in the zoning code.
Well, I don't, I don't think when you say, if on the statutes says special circumstances applicable to the property, including I don't, I, I would read that as including, but not necessarily limited to.
That's, yeah, actually, that's true, but, but it has to, yeah, such that the property would.
I mean, if it said involving.
That's true.
Size, shape, topography.
The strict application.
Looking at some other jurisdictions wording here. They actually.
So I've reached out to colleagues on this, and I think I've there, there's a, there might be a distinction in some jurisdictions between what they have on the books and what county council is comfortable with.
Yeah, so, but this is. So a variance application shall be filed whenever any de- deviation from the development standard. So that's what we're talking about, height, lot yards, open space.
Word.
I'm reading another jurisdictions.
Oh, another jurisdiction.
Yeah, that's right, it's in U N code. And variances may not be approved for uses or activities, we did that. Financial hardship does not represent grounds on which to file a variance application. And then variances to use provisions of the zoning code. So they, they have that in there twice in different wording, 'cause clearly their planning commission did the same thing.
Yeah.
But then the required findings. There are practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships created with the strict application of the code because of the physical circumstances and characteristics of the property that are not shared by other properties. Does not grant special privileges. Failure to make all the required findings. Then they only have three findings. Variants did not grant or authorize a user activity, there are practical difficulties, and it doesn't grant special privileges. She seems like everybody's organized these same concepts differently.
I'm not, I, you know, I have a I, I don't have a problem with, with the condition, or the findings that were requiring. There's a question under what was presented here as, as subdivision C, granted, the application will not be detrimental, do we wanna say significantly detrimental? The, it would not be violating six five nine oh six if we did. Pull this away from you. Oh, okay. But I think having the granting of the variance will be consistent with the general purposes and objectives of this type, et cetera, that was presented here as D, I think that's fine. Actions of a predecessor in interest in the, what was presented as B is, I think, very problematic.
Okay, so. You said you had six. What are yours?
Okay.
Six.
A is. There's the first sentence of A. B is the second sentence of A. C is the strict application of the zoning ordinance would deprive the property involved of privileges enjoyed by other property in the vicinity and under identical zoning classification. That's, that's from the section. Okay, D is the granting of the application is necessary to prevent a physical hardship, which is not of the applicant's own actions, but I, I, like, which is not due to the applicant, or something like that.
Which is not of the applicant's own making?
Making, is what I thought.
That sounds almost biblical, but I like it.
Yes.
Good. But then eliminate the, or the actions of a predecessor in, in interest. And E is the fine, the granting of the application will not be detrimental. Question whether you wanna say significantly detrimental or injurious to property or improvements in the vicinity. It will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, general welfare, convenience. And F is just the way it's presented as D here.
Why did you wanna take up, or the actions of a predecessor, because it just muddies it?
No, because the, the poor schmuck that's coming before us for this variance holds no responsibility for the actions of his predecessor.
Yes, he might. I mean, he bought it, knowing what he knows about it, right?
Of his own making.
That would be of his own making.
So that it's covered. If it's not of his own making, then it's all.
But he'll say the physical hardship wasn't of my own making. He's gonna say, I bought it, but I didn't create the physical hardship. That's what he's gonna say in response.
And that would be true. You know, if it was something that's like, there was an earthquake, and now there's a big gap in the middle of my property, you're gonna have to let me work around it. But if he bought it.
We could say of, not of the applicant's own making or failure, um, to failure of due diligence or something along those lines.
That's why.
Yes, that would be fine. Yes, that would be fine. That's good.
Man, it's nice to have an act of an awaken.
I'm not awake.
Okay, Julie, one more time?
I think it's going to be the granting of the application is necessary to prevent a physical hardship, which is not of the applicant's own making or failure, or by virtue of their failure of due diligence.
Applicants due diligence. That's, that's great. Okay?
So we are also comfortable with that list? Julie, do you feel like?
I, I have, my notes are to where I can't read them anymore, but I think it's, I think it's.
But that's all in sixty five oh six, right?
Well, we added some others.
Not the.
The due diligence part is ours.
Right.
And, and E and F.
D and F are ours.
Are ours.
I mean, they are, they're ours, but I think they also are premises of state law for just any sort of zoning.
Okay, do you have that written?
I can, I'll, I'll give it to you afterwards.
Because I, I have a mess.
Yeah, I can, I, I'll, I'll type it up and.
Just email it to me. That's great.
And I'll CC everybody else that disagrees.
In case they have. Well, we'll bring it back to, I can bring it back in.
Track changes if you want, if you want to look at it one more time.
Let's look at the conditions of approval, see what we think of those.
These, I guess, couldn't get a handle.
C is sort of odd. But I, I get what they're saying.
What, what, the expensive additional wording, I, for somebody just reading this, I'd say achieve the findings for a variance listed in section seventeen point three five point oh five oh.
I would just say achieve the findings required for a variance under this chapter.
I'd like being specifically, having people specifically direct.
Achieve the findings for a variance is just, achieve seems like a weird word, yeah, like.
Well, you know, I mean, it is, we have to require the person to do this in order to find.
Exactly. I, I know what they're trying to say, and that just doesn't.
Okay, fulfill.
You know.
Fulfillment of.
That's passive voice. That's passive voice.
I mean, we're trying to achieve the following outcome.
Everything else is active voice.
Oh, I see, I see what you mean. Reach, now, reach the findings. You have to, well, okay, fulfill the finding?
Yeah, I, it's fine.
Okay.
I mean, we know what they're trying to say.
Okay.
If we come up with a better word, we'll.
Do we want to cite the finding section so that everybody knows?
I liked what Julie suggested in that, in this.
Chapter.
Yeah.
They can find it. Okay?
I love the revocation, so you, so they go ahead, they use their variance and build in the setback, but we don't like something else, so how?
No, if they're, if they do, they're going to revoke that. They don't listen to the conditions and limitations. I mean, theoretically, we can make them take it down, how, depending on how bad it is.
It's again, one of those things that, like, once it's there, it's very difficult to, but I think.
Having the threat that we could take it down might make sense.
You like to think so. Okay, plans are now on it.
Okay, question, now. I'm struggling with the, the overlay and the PD plan. It sounds as if, from the expiration and extension section on page two oh seven, that a PD plan does not remain in effect as long as the PD overlay zone exists. Is that right? When we come up with a, assuming you have to have a PD plan approved in order to approve the PD overlay. Then does the PD plan cease to exist at some point? I mean, we, the reason I bring this up is that seventeen point three six point oh six oh, under expiration, says a PD plan shall expire two years after the effective date. Oh, that's it, this is in less actions, okay. Okay, so. An approved PD plan may specify a development staging program exceeding two years. And then the, the next thing, under tentative map, the PD plan shall expire upon the expiration of the tentative map. What I'm, okay, say, if a tentative map is expired, is there going to be a PD overlay zone? When somebody sees PD after their property, where are they?
Technically, yeah, it's already been zoned. Because the, the zoning, the zoning is part of the project, which encompasses the subdivision map. Once everything gets approved, the zoning automatically, the ordinance takes effect in thirty days, where the tentative map will have at least, for starters, three years before it expires or they file for an extension.
So ten years down the line, somebody sees PD after their, their parcel number.
Yeah.
Is there a, a plan development plan that they can go to to see what, what that's all about?
Well, no, it would be rolled into the, uh, into the original plan with the subdivision map that then expired, so it technically wouldn't apply anymore. I suppose you could go in and rezone the parcel by ordinance, but, you know, unfortunately, what happens, and that kind of applies to all the differences. So say you have a subdivision that has multiple different uses that includes residential, maybe single family, multifamily. It also includes some open space, maybe some recreational facilities. And so you apply this zoning that kind of adheres to your tentative map. Uh, but until the map is actually recorded, nothing ever makes sense because you don't have any of those boundaries or, or parcel boundaries to kind of define where the zoning goes. So they kind of go together, but unfortunately, just by, by virtue of, of law, it's, it's, the zoning ordinance is, or the ordinance as established is already taken effect in the thirty days, so it's just, it's kind of this awkward thing that just exists. It's a zombie plan.
Yeah.
So, so the, the plan would not exist then here down the road.
So then it reverts to the base zoning unless they submit a new PD plan.
Right.
Well, how about when you say reverse the, first of the base zoning?
I think that, isn't the overlay zone, every time a community has standards that have been approved, am I mixing this up with something else? I thought the overlay zone sort of would decide, the board has decided this area will have a PD overlay zone.
No.
Oh.
You apply for a.
Right, you're talking about, yeah, specific future.
Specific areas to have that situation, though, where.
I'm only displaying my ignorance, you know, so that Hector doesn't feel intimidated. But I'm never, what I'm talking about the rest of the time.
I'm just holding up your ignorance. There's no definition for overlay. Can somebody throw me a bone?
Well, we, the PD overlay zone is provided for in chapter seventeen point four.
I do believe we do have a definition of overlay, so overlays are.
It's not in here.
Overlay zone?
No, I should say the definition.
Oh, yeah.
Overlay is.
Right, oh, we have a list of overlay zones.
Yeah.
The first line of under purpose, I would say that this chapter provides procedures for establishing a planned development PD overlay zone, parentheses, see chapter seventeen point one four.
It's not, yeah.
Which is, we, you know, it's, it's way back here when we were talking about airport zones and such things.
I remember that, yeah.
PD overlay zone is one of those things. But if you don't have that reference, that somebody just coming into, well, I want to do a plan development, they wouldn't know that, maybe we already had a stuff back. So I would appreciate that insertion, Gina? Then.
Right, we start off overlay zones without, there's not a page that says an overlay zone is and includes these. It starts right into the first type of overlay zone. That's what you guys are looking for, right?
It would be nice.
Can we just put a general statement in the beginning of this section?
Well, I think a, a definition in the back of overlay zone.
An introductory paragraph would also be helpful.
Yeah, well, that's.
You know, ours, and it could just explain what an overlay zone is, one paragraph, and then have a list of the overlay zones available in.
You're driving way back.
I'm talking about on page fifty.
Back in overlay zones, yes.
Fifty five, yes. Like, just an introductory paragraph.
Okay. I think also under purpose, uh, explain a PD plan. We just start mentioning PD plans in this chapter without saying what the purpose of the PD plan. Then, under applicability, it would make sense to me to say the procedures in this chapter shall apply to all proposals to establish a PD overlay zone with a PD plan. If I'm understanding what a PD plan does.
So it'd be a PD overlay and point.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. And.
I mean, you can't have an overlay without a plan.
Well, that's what I figured. That's why I think we ought to be mentioning it here.
Right.
And plan, and plan, and PD plan, or PD and plan. So are you up with this, Gina?
Yep.
Okay, under procedures, same sort of thing. Review authority, a PD overlay zone with its PD plan, or just and PD plan, must be adopted by the, adopted by the board of supervisors. Under review procedures, then, right at the end, it's, it's, the PD plan shall be processed in the same manner as a conditional use permit application pursuant to chapter seventeen point three one, right, conditional use permits, except the board of supervisors shall be the necessary final review authority. Well, I guess, okay, have it the way it is. Okay.
So could the expiration, uh, the subdivision map or tentative map or, um, PD plan, all of those things together, could that automatically trigger a stripping of the PD overlay from the parcel? Do you know, Julie?
I don't.
Well, I, I think you still, no, I think any change of zoning has to be done by ordinance.
Yeah. But once it's changed.
So, I mean, we would have to go in and, and.
No, but I can understand.
Wouldn't you clean them up automatically at that?
Well, we should be.
Bless you. I'm making, I'm making her allergic.
Yeah. Well, and I know it seems to be that.
We should be, and we.
If you have, if you just show the regular zoning, and there are strange things on these properties that don't seem to fit the regular zoning, I think it's good to have PD there to say, something's happened here.
But not.
Even though there's something isn't.
Now there's nothing applying to that property any longer.
Well, the, but the property's been developed.
No, I'm saying when it expires without development.
Development, oh, yeah, no, that, it should.
No, no, no. So long as there's absolutely a project there, it's not a problem.
Right.
Thinking it.
Yeah.
Which has happened. People have.
I suppose that if, if all of those permits were to expire and another developer came along and picked up the property and wanted to reapply, you know, that would be one less step they would have to go through unless they, of course, were going to change the plan, but, or, or change, I shouldn't say change the plan, because you could still change the plan, but maybe.
If it's expired, he'd have to.
He would have to reapply for a new plan, but I'm saying the zoning itself, the act of an ordinance is already, it's already established. One less thing.
I would say it should disappear.
Yeah, I would think it should disappear because the zone change is the most minor of their issues when they go to take that project back.
So the question is, can we write the ordinance so that the zoning automatically disappears if the plan expires?
Not implemented, right.
Well, I mean, the, the PD overlay zone, um, shall expire with the PD plan.
Right, so that would require planning staff to.
Right.
To, to, to literally manage a, um, a list of.
Yeah.
Of PD plans and subdivision maps and use permits, and then look for the expired ones, and then take, and then initiate an action.
Well, you have so much staff here.
Oh, yeah, we're operating at, what, less than fifty percent.
No, I, I, I understand, it just seems like.
It's a lot cleaner, for sure, especially as we're going through an exercise like this and we're starting to really look at the zoning map, and you're finding all kinds of inconsistencies that, you know, have existed for many years, just because we just. I think it creates a situation, though, where if it's not immediately done and there's no notice to the public that zoning is changing. I mean, I know what we're saying.
to the public that zoning is changing. I mean, I know what we're saying on the front end, there will be, but I'm not a hundred percent convinced that that would, to the extent, I'm trying to think of a situation where somebody would have depended on seeing that on the zoning map. It's already been done. It's already been put into place and, and it's. I, I feel like it's, you know, just like a, a use permit, once it's vested, you can't.
Well, I think someone's going to ask the question, but my assumption would be, I was looking at a piece of property and it said PD on there, that it has to be developed under a PD, but that's not really true. They could always develop it under the base zoning.
Right.
Without any issue and the PD wouldn't really matter. So in that case, maybe it doesn't matter.
Right.
Automatic zoning expiration gives me a little bit of a hurt burn, but.
And it's not as, really a zoning, it's an overlay.
It is a zone though, for procedural purposes.
But it still implies that there is a plan that was approved and then would otherwise be in effect.
And does somebody think that because it's there, that there's a PD plan they can just pick up and run with? Well, not if it expired.
Yeah.
It's time to start over again. So I, I guess they're always going to get.
They're always going to have.
The counter.
As long, yes, exactly. As long as, as long as the staff is ready with the answer. As long as there is staff.
You don't know when somebody abandons their project always until you start to do.
And that's when research comes in and we do it all the time.
Right. Okay.
Okay. How about under required findings? C, I don't understand the term traffic levels of service, um, down on the thirty line of C.
It's a technical term for public works.
Why we have a technical term here for people to try and understand? Is that like the classification of C road or?
Yeah.
Oh, the level of service?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a standard term.
Is that something they can refer people to? C seven.
Public Works. Go to Public Works and they'll tell you what level of services and let me tell you, none of them are good.
So that, that's, that's what it's referring to.
Yeah.
The A level, E levels. All right.
L O S E. You won't be building anything much.
Now, under conditions, oh five oh, in approving a PD overlay zone with its PD plan, then are you going to be approving one without the other?
With a PD plan.
Yeah.
Yeah. You're not going to get the PD overlay zone unless there's a PD plan submitted, right?
Right.
Yeah.
But, but you'd be approving both at the same time.
But, so I'm just saying you could say with.
Yeah.
PD overlay zone with PD plan. We could be saying that everywhere instead of and plan. We could be saying with plan.
Well, okay, but I think it's important.
At the beginning.
Yeah. But, okay, anyhow, as long as we have the with there, that's fine. And these, this is again, conditions, we have, we need to have ands between the various provisions instead of ors. Okay, so I will just rely upon the expertise of other people in the room as far as whether the expiration provision now makes sense. Fine, but okay. I, I thought to refer to any amendments to you.
And I'll say, well, I can't really answer that question. It depends.
It depends. Okay, and extensions, okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right, then down to amendments of approved plans. B three, and I thought this is something that we did before. So maybe I'm suggesting something that would reject it. An increase or decrease in the floor area of any non-residential land use that results in the floor area being less than the minimum or more than maximum stated in the PD plan. It's a lot clearer than exceeding the minimum or maximum. Is that, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Good. Under minor amendments, we don't provide that there, the approval or disapproval by the planning director is subject to appeal. That has come with the territory?
Anything that the planning director does is subject to appeal.
Okay, then let's just say we ought to say subject to appeal.
There, that we would have to, every, we probably have to put subject to appeal for everything. The planning dir, it's just known in seventeen, what's currently seventeen ninety-eight and has pulled over, any action taken is appealed. That's covered in another section.
Okay, if it's covered, that's great. Okay.
Yep. Okay. Development is another, like, boy, you're a little set.
And I can tell you now, I have not boned up. I, I mean, this, there's a lot of rules in the government code, so I'm relying on Jim having reviewed this and found it to be compliant with existing government code.
Okay, I really, I, I tried reading the government code. And I didn't have any problems with two oh nine, it's two oh nine, two oh ten, and two eleven. Since we have, on two eleven, um, at the top of the page, we're talking about the director shall transmit the planning commission's written recommendation and complete record of the application of board of supervisors. Then under B denial, if the planning commission has recommended against the development agreement, the board of supervisors is not required to take any action unless an appeal is filed in accordance with such and such. But then under B two, the board of supervisors, there's a hearing. It says, after receiving the report from the planning commission, no later than the top blah blah blah, the board of supervisors shall hold a public hearing in accordance with the provisions of.
If, it should, it should be the modifier, if the planning commission is recommending approval.
Right.
Yeah.
I was going to say unless section seventeen point three, seven point oh five oh, A three B, uh, unless it does not act under section.
Maybe they say if the planning commission recommends approval, comma, after receiving the report, and then go on.
But it's, they, they could also, if there was an appeal of the denial, then they would also have to schedule it.
Okay.
That they don't have to do a hearing, really, it's, it's, if there's been a denial, they don't need to take any action. And I think we, we can just, we can say.
But I think that's already described elsewhere.
Yes, but then you get to B two, uh, what says the board of supervisors shall hold a public hearing. You can end that sentence, uh, unless it does not act under section seventeen thirty-seven oh five oh A three B. So you take care of it.
Unless it does not act.
Yeah, so, or you could do the alternative way, which is the way that Julie started by saying, if the, um, planning commission recommends approval or an appeal has been filed, then, um, the public noticed the hearings or after receiving a report from the planning commission, then they schedule their hearings.
Okay.
Either, either way.
Either way, but we, there is an inconsistency in here.
Right. It's just not acknowledging that it's possible that when it was denied, they just gave it up.
Yeah, which is an interesting thing, is that they, they don't need to take any action. I mean, first I was going to say unless action is taken under, you know.
You're right.
Pursuant to, but. They can just ignore it and not have it be on the agenda.
Gina, do you understand that? Whatever wording you guys come up with, I'm.
So, yeah, so B two is what we're talking about, right?
Yes.
B two, make it consistent with, uh, A, A three B.
We have this same situation in, and very simpler wording in other sections, so. Once we figure it out, apply it everywhere.
Right.
You know, it's going to be really nice. We're going to have a new zoning code and all the wording will be very consistent until we start amending it. And then we'll mess it up where we have carefully crafted wording and.
Let's hope that doesn't happen.
Until a computer program's devised to help us make contextual changes.
Wouldn't that.
Like an AI.
Can you find similar wording to this elsewhere in this document?
Yeah.
And show me so I can decide whether it updated or not.
Okay, um, change to two twelve. Annual review, just to be consistent with the language in government code, six five eight, six five point one. Instead of saying, uh, the applicant should be required to demonstrate compliance with the provisions of the development agreement at least once a year, once every twelve months, just in case there's, it could possibly be any different.
I, again, we're going to be consistent.
We can't assume that people know that a, a year is twelve months?
Well, I, I could recognize that it is, but, you know, people talk about calendar years, what, wait a minute?
Every three hundred sixty-five days. Oh, why not leave here?
I'm just saying, just put it the way, in the terms of the, of the state statute, there can't possibly be any.
And it's all fine until the state modifies it.
That's right. And under appeal of the termination, and this is just a, um, clarification, um, down, I think it's the third sentence, the issuance of a finding of compliance or a finding of non-compliance by the director. I'd like to say the issuance of a finding by the director of compliance, uh, or non-compliance. Nobody's going to say the director didn't comply.
Sentence is just.
Yep. Okay, nothing on page two thirteen. So did I, you okay with what I said?
No, I can't even.
Okay.
I'm reading and highlighting and you're speaking and I honestly messed it.
Okay, so the sentence, the applicant, the appellant shall specify the reasons for the appeal, period. The issuance of a finding by the director of compliance or cross out finding of, or non-compliance, then cross out by the director.
Finding of compliance or finding of.
It, it can be, just be finding by the director of compliance or non-compliance.
Okay.
And the expiration of appeal, period, blah, blah, blah.
Got it.
Okay. Gee, guys, we're really getting through. Okay, great.
Mm-hmm.
At the middle of the page, seventeen thirty-eight oh four, initiation of amendment, um, that may be initiated by any qualified applicant, blah, 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 blah. Insert the word by, by the planning director or by the board of supervisors.
Where are you?
Where?
Okay, seventeen point three eight point oh four oh.
Yeah, by.
Just insert the word by in the middle of that one sentence provision. After it says application form entries, comma.
Why?
The planning director. We have by any applicant, qualified applicant, or by the board of supervisors. Need to buy.
You left out a buy.
Left out a buy.
But it could just say by the planning director, comma, the board of supervisors or planning commission. We don't need. We've got a, a mishmash of buys.
It's only because there was a buy before.
Yes.
So we'll say bye, bye, bye.
Yeah.
Any, anyway, just let Grammarly tell you what to do with it.
Right.
So I don't remember striking out the staff report section. And I, I don't have a strong feeling about this one way or the other, but I noticed it's in other sections also. And is not, why is it out? Is it because it's?
Because it, that staff report happens every time there's something on the.
Exactly.
You know, I think.
But I wondered why it was in some places and not in others, and then it got.
Stricken out of.
Stricken everywhere, yeah. Is it because it's just a common procedure?
Yeah, and, and you, it got into the, the particulars could cause problems.
Unless somehow the state says something about, there are places where the state says the planning agency shall prepare a report. I mean, I don't know if it's one of those or not.
It's, it looks like it's been taken out everywhere and I didn't know if that was purposeful in some way.
I think it was, I think it's just that we were concerned that it wasn't covering everything that maybe should be covered.
And that because it has specifics in it, we'd be better off just to, it's an assumed thing. The planning director.
Yeah.
Provides a recommendation or a report to us.
Yeah. That's what I remember. Or almost. Okay. And on page two sixteen, at the very top, we have, uh, under procedures, public hearing and notice. All amendments to the planning zoning code and zoning map shall be referred to the planning commission, which shall conduct at least one public hearing. I'm stopping there because the next section has a provision for planning commission hearing. So we can compact this by having up at the top, where I stopped reading, you just have conduct at least one public hearing and then cut to the language. in the next sections, A, in accordance with section seventeen point two seven point oh eight oh, conduct a public hearing.
Do we have the ten days somewhere?
Yeah, I don't see the ten days reflected.
We need the ten days in there.
Oh, oh, yeah, 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 um, I'm, I'm not done with the sentence yet. It's just, it just, there's no need for, in the next section, to have this provision about the planning commission hearing. But what I'm saying is just we transport the language in accordance with section so and so, so and so, conduct a public hearing. Put that up, insert that into the provision at the top of the page. So, and at least one public hearing, comma, in accordance with section seventeen point two seven point oh eight oh, conduct a public hearings, comma, on any proposed amendment, at least ten days before blah, 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 blah.
If you want to leave, okay. So what are you achieving here? You just?
We're getting duplication, there are two requirements the planning commission have a hearing.
Yes.
Well, there's no need for that, we can, the next, the next, yeah, eliminate A and the title can be planning commission recommendation. Title of the.
Oh, yes. I thought you were taking out the other one.
No.
I misconstrued that, okay. Yes, I agree.
Gina, I'm sorry, you can't just look over my shoulder, it'd be easier.
So let's, can you read out loud?
Language, but I'm not sure, what, what are you saying about the, the heading?
Oh, okay. If you've got my language for oh five zero B with importing language from the later section, then oh three eight, oh six zero, the heading title can just be planning commission recommendation.
Okay.
And then eliminate subdivision A. Julie, do you say?
It refers to, um, the conduct of public hearings, and the one before only refers to the, the notice, so you need to reference both of those, seventeen twenty-seven oh seven oh and seventeen twenty-seven oh eight oh.
But we, we still have.
Two different things.
We have, we would have the site to twenty-seven point oh eight oh in the language that's imported from the.
Pushed up into the.
Pushed up into.
Yeah, that's what I'm just saying, just have to make sure you get both of them up in there.
And then, but oh seven oh is still there at the end of the sentence.
Right.
So we're in agreement that whatever the language of oh five oh B will still have at least ten days before the date of any public hearing?
Right.
Okay.
You're just taking part of A in oh six oh.
And putting it up to B.
Get up above, separating the hearing from the recommendation.
Right. And then oh six oh will just have a, Julie, do you say subdivision? I know that's what the state says. What, like, referring to the A or B paragraph in your section, oh six oh.
I mean, I, sometimes I say subdivision, sometimes I say subsection.
Okay.
I wouldn't put too much weight on what I say.
Well, I didn't want to offend your ears.
Yeah.
Okay, so then oh six oh just has paragraph A, which is the recommendation to board of supervisors.
Which is paragraph B renamed A.
Yeah, right. And on that, again, down at the bottom, uh, recommendation for approval shall be made by the affirmative vote of not less than three members of the planning commission. Because total membership, you know, the current membership of this planning mission is four. You've reached the same resolution anyhow, if you just say three members, it can't be any. He says. Then down toward the bottom of the page, section oh seven oh, we have the same situation that we had, uh, back with the development. The same situation we had on page two eleven, under seventeen point three seven point oh five oh, about the board of supervisors shall hold a public hearing. You have a lot of scribbles back on there.
Right.
So if you just refer back to whatever you do on page two eleven and make it consistent. Which I think the language. Achieve it by saying on last, under section seventeen point three eight point oh six oh B two, it does not act. Then right at the top of page two seventeen. So there is. If the board of supervisors, I'm starting at the bottom of two sixteen, the board proposes any substantial revision not previously considered by the planning commission or against hearings, proposed revisions shall first be referred to the planning commission for a report and recommendation, but the planning commission shall not be required to hold a public hearing. How, what's the mechanics? How does the planning commission take?
You put it on an agenda, you put it on an agenda, but you don't necessarily have to re-invite the public.
Okay.
To, you don't have to.
We have a resolution, we have a, we discuss it.
It's on the agenda to satisfy the Brown Act, but you just re-discuss it. You don't have to take evidence again, is really.
Yet, yet we don't have to open it for public comment.
Because the evidence that has already come in presumably through the, um, board and planning commission. You don't have, a public comment you will need under the Brown Act, but you don't need to receive evidence into the record.
Public hearing, but we.
We don't even have to provide a recommendation, they'll just assume we've recommended it if we don't say we don't recommend it.
Well, they'd say.
It's just really.
And it's mirroring, it's mirroring state law, but I think it's just.
So are we actually failing? Excuse me? Are we actually fa, failure of the planning commission? We're not too badly aware of it. So would you like?
It actually says in state law, so if, so let's say there's, something's kicked back to the planning commission. The idea is to provide a resolution for the parties to the hearing. If it's kicked back and somehow the planning commission doesn't hear it, this is what state law says.
Okay.
So we don't have to say it, it'll be the case.
No, but that's.
But, yeah.
It's very, it's hard to imagine if something sent back to us, us saying, oh, we don't.
Or just never say anything.
Make sure we take some action.
Or, well, I guess there probably are circumstances where things don't happen fast enough, and the idea is to provide certainty to.
Yeah, that.
The party.
You know, if it doesn't have to be a public hearing, can it be put on the agenda? No, but the, the Brown Act requires a certain amount of notice.
You ha, it has to be, so that, I mean, you can require, you can always add more due process than is required. The idea is the evidence-taking portion has concluded. The board has a revision it wants to make based on the evidence, and you got, if it's a big one, it, it wants you to look at it.
Yeah.
But all of the evid, it doesn't mean that we're reopening it for yet more evidence for. But a public comment, they, people can make public comment, they, that does, but making a public comment doesn't give them all of a sudden an appeal right. They're not a part, I think that's what it's coming down to.
And it shall not.
It will be a public hearing, but it will be a public hearing without public comment.
It's not a, no, a public hearing is, is a term of art, it's a public meeting.
Right.
It's a public meeting.
Because it's not a hearing, because we're not opening it.
It's the same thing with informational items, right? That we have to, there, it, we shouldn't be, some, I think they were, planning's so used to hearing, sometimes they were just automatically noticing them. Not every time that a public meeting is required is a public hearing required.
It's just that we can't talk with each other in private, so it's a public meeting, but it doesn't mean that it's a public.
Yeah, the Brown Act will always apply regardless of whether it's a public hearing or, or not.
This does say it shall not be required to hold a public hearing, so if we wanted more evidence, we could ask, we could have opened it.
Well, you'd have to note, so if, I mean, you kind of have to choose, under state law, you don't have to have a second public hearing just because something was kicked back from the board. Okay, so this was written, the intent anyway, is to be the minimum requirement of state law. If the commission and the board of supervisors wants to add a non-mandatory public hearing, then we'd have to, but then it requires ten days advance notice, and, and it has to go to the paper, and it, and it gives people rights as parties that weren't.
We wouldn't have, we could have, we could put this on the agenda, less than ten days notice.
So the agenda has to be published under the Brown Act, theoretically, you're used to two weeks in advance. Technically, it only needs to be published seventy-two hours in advance of a regular meeting, twenty-four hours in advance of a special meeting.
Hurry up deal.
We could, right.
Need our recommendation right away.
And we, and again, we do, again, there's like, we would have to still allow public comment if somebody wants to come and talk about this and, and try to influence how you look at the, the revisions made by the board, then they could talk to it, but it, they, that wouldn't necessarily make them a, a party.
If we had it and, and God forbid, we were all going on vacation for three weeks, but, um.
Then whatever.
We could have a seventy-two hour notice for non-public.
You could.
Hearings. And have, and put it on the agenda, seventy-two hour.
Yeah, it's actually rather extraordinary to publish an agenda two weeks in advance of a meeting.
Yeah, it's, it's great for us, and thank you very much. Here. Okay.
We should leave it alone, because.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I, I just didn't understand the mechanic.
I, I remember thinking that seemed odd too, but now it makes sense to me. Thank you.
So Julie, on this next page, is, is, it was the subject that I emailed to you last night, late.
Yeah, and I didn't, I got it at lunch and don't have, and didn't, you want, I'm sorry, and I, I have it and I can look at.
This was, this was on the.
You want to know how many times.
General plan, I, I was under the impression we could only modify the general plan four times.
Yes, but that is tr, you could only have like four hearings a year to modify the general plan, but each of those hearings can have multiple amendments. So we can, so we can say, we want to modify the general plan in these five different ways, we can have a separate agenda, I, you know, but it, but we just can't do that, we can't.
You can have twenty amendments.
And, and I think there are subtleties to the rules, and I don't know all of them, because we've never been in that situation.
Time to, to check that, we'll, we'll, we'll doubt it now. Do we have a non-mandatory? Any non-mandatory elements in our general plan?
We do, actually, yeah.
Noise or?
I think noise is required.
I'm not exactly sure which ones.
Well, in that case.
Yeah, I think noise is required.
Is, does the general plan itself?
It's not. Noise is.
Yeah, that's my.
It's, then, does the, I guess this is something else, if you go check, is, does the general plan itself provide limitations for its amendment?
Uh, I don't know if the general plan could go outside of state law and limit amendment, but like, I mean.
Not mandatory elements.
Yeah.
That just needs to be.
You, you all realize that all of these different things that I'm doing might not all be done by tomorrow, right?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, come on.
Okay.
This year?
Where's your dedication, Julie? Come on. So the question is, could the non-mandatory elements be amended on a different schedule?
Yeah, I mean, how many, we just need to make this clear.
I believe that if you're amending a general, a non-mandatory element, there's no restrictions, that's a separate add, add-on. I think the idea is, they want the general plan to be pretty set. They don't want it to be, well, we'll just, every time something new comes up, we can change it willy-nilly.
But I think we should make it clear, I understand what you're saying, is that there's only four times that we can take action amending the general plan, but one of those actions might encompass several amendments.
It says that each amendment may include more than one change to the general plan.
Do I have to do anything now?
Yeah, you're still. Is it still?
For the non-mandatories.
Okay.
And, and is this accurate about the mandatory element can be amended?
Okay.
I believe that my entire adult life.
Which is a long.
Every place I have ever worked, that is what they have, and I'm only practicing California, and they've always said there are only four times a year in the general place, but that each one can include many amendments.
Well, good.
So, but that doesn't mean it hasn't changed since, and I still believe something from twenty years ago.
Uh, I do note that the, the section right above that, the oh four oh, we have the by thing again. So we go to quit by before the planning director, or are we eliminating from before the board of supervisors and put it before the planning director?
Yeah.
And that would take out the or, before the by, before the board of supervisors.
How do we might actually get all the way to terms and definitions? I can't believe it.
Or I don't.
Please refer.
I mean, there, I don't have much to say, because the enforcement sections, which is brand new and required the most attention, seems like it's really the direction of the board of supervisors on what they want to do with enforcement. And I assume that whoever wrote this section has some direction.
I, no, I, well, I, my understanding, I think for, I don't, I think for now, the board wants enforcement centralized, it, with code, I mean, we obviously don't want to have different enforce, to the extent we can avoid it, we don't want to have different enforcement schemes, so people are confused about what procedures are. So I, I wasn't given specific direction on how to write it, but I looked at other codes where we recently written, where we tied it into eight point oh six.
Well, let's, let's get through our general plan amendments and specific plans, right? Probably not a lot.
Page two nineteen, the, under public hearing notice, we have the same situation we had back on page two sixteen. So all amendments to, under public hearing and notice, all amendments to general plan shall be referred to the planning commission, which shall conduct at least one public hearing, comma, and then the language from the
Yep.
subsection A below, in accordance with section so and so, so and so, conduct a public hearing, comma, and then back up to the section on any proposed amendment, at least ten days. So same thing you did on two sixteen.
And then we're going to have the same thing also with after receiving recommendations from the planning commission and the board of supervisors, you know.
Yeah, but, but first we have to get the, uh, under, what now will be A.
Right.
Of oh seven oh, which is, then the heading's going to be planning commission recommendation. Um, at the end of that, the recommendation for approval will certainly be made by the firm of the code of not less than three members of the planning commission.
All, all the same changes.
All the same stuff, yeah. So. So then Gina, what we're talking about on page two twenty would be again, this. it'd be again, refer back to what we did on page 211 about the hearing. Okay? And, uh, all I have on specific plans is on page 222, again, the bottom one. Recommendation for approval should be made by affirmative of not less than three members of the Planning Commission.
Should be a period after Board of Supervisors on the last sentence.
Excuse me?
Should be a period after Board of Supervisors on the last sentence of B2.
Yeah.
I'm channeling Mr. Wooster.
Yeah, that's, okay, and then, once again, over on page 223.
Same page.
Uh, C1, again, refer back to whatever we do on page 211 about the Board of Supervisors hearing. That's making it easier, isn't it? Don't worry.
So you guys are not foreclosed from giving policy direction on enforcement? I mean, I don't want you to think you're-
I know.
I read a few late last night.
Me too.
I mean, it was the last thing.
It was the last thing I read. I told her I have to finish reading this.
Okay, I, I, I had one, one section that I was playing with and that was on page 227. And maybe when I go back and read it again, I can have other things. Check, or send, uh, section 17.41, point 070. The, uh, I wasn't sure why we say, uh, let's see, no discretionary permit shall be accepted for processing or issued under this title on a parcel of land where the director is aware of a noticed violation.
So I think what we're trying to do here was, there was a desire, at least by the building official and planning director, to not give a dis- not authorize a discretionary permit if there's a code violation. We're trying to figure out at what stage that, you know, we have to, do we wait until the code issue has gone all the way to hearing and appeal, et cetera? Or can we stop it if there, there's a notice of violation? And I think that the staff preference was that if somebody's received a notice of violation, that they have to remedy that either by showing us how there isn't a violation or by fixing it before we issue a discretionary permit.
And, and any enforcement of a violation begins with a notice of violation?
So sometimes there is an informal opportunity to correct depending on it. There has to be an opportunity to correct before a citation is issued. Sometimes, oftentimes, if it's not severe, code compliance will possibly say, hey, just FYI, you know, we're not going to do a formal notice of violation, but this, you have to fix this. And then if they don't, a notice of violation will issue. Sometimes if it's a severe or egregious violation, they'll do the notice of violation right away with very little time to fix it.
Well, since-
So there's a policy call.
I think just changing notice to notice of would make a difference to me. Aware of a notice of violation, that means there's something official out there.
Notice violation.
I, and I think maybe part of it is that under state law or federal law, they might not use the same terminology, so, but I mean, I, I under-
Yeah, but if that's what we, if that's the term we use formally-
I don't think there's anything wrong with changing it to notice of violation.
Okay, I, I like that.
But is that, if that is what we call it?
I think that I probably pick notice just to make sure that we don't prevent something where the person isn't even aware they're doing anything wrong.
That's what I was thinking you were trying to say.
So we could say aware that a notice of violation has issued related. We could say has issued-
Yeah, I like that.
-related to land use, building, and I think that would take care of.
So this seems to me to be trying to allow a permit to be submitted and processed, but not, probably not issued. If they determine that it's not a potentially significant health, safety, or welfare impact. So, so the violation is something insignificant or something not, I, I questioned it when I read it and thought, I remember a time when somebody was not allowed to move forward with their project because they had an outstanding violation they hadn't taken care of. And they were all upset about it because they wanted to move forward and they were going to take care of it and they haven't anyway, you know? It was all a misunderstanding or something. But then- So it seems like they're, you're trying to not stop them from moving forward here.
Right.
Right.
If it's a minor thing.
So I think, I think we're trying to, yeah, trying to say that, yeah, I think that's what was put here. There's a, because following findings and I, there's a part of me, I'm just, I just keep looking at this and I'm like, is there a chunk missing? Because why?
The, the director against consultation with the county department sent a, sent notice of violation, first finds that, and then you just continue the sentence with what you have under one. Since you don't have all of the final following findings, you have one finding. You say first finds that the violation-
Yeah. Unless, unless, there's, the fact that it's written that way makes me worry that there's some other chunks that I drafted that never got put in here or something. I'll have to look at that, but I agree with what you're saying.
Okay, yeah, okay. But that seems, yeah, that seems to cover it. Because I, you, you notice that that part of the sentence does talk about the county department that sent notice of the violation, so a notice of violation makes sense earlier. Okay, that, what I have.
And we'll be back tomorrow, we need to start on-
We're going to go back to wherever we're-
220.
Is Martha coming?
I think we are, we'll be here, so we'll go back to-
Back to-
128?
128.
128, we're at 128.
Yeah.
Is there anything else on the agenda tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be starting at 128.
So.
Well, I'm real pleased that we got 128.
Is that your commissioner report?
Yes.
And Gina, I think you were just saying that you were hoping to contin- I don't know if this was talked about, we were hoping to continue this through April. I know you, you sent an email on the special meetings. The Wednesdays.
Just make yourself available and then, um, that way when we're done, we're done.
Okay.
I'm not saying that every, we're going to need every Wednesday in April. I'm hoping we don't. Do we have a sense of what will be on our agendas on our regular meetings?
Next regular meeting?
Um, Julie might have more of an idea than I, because she's been reviewing the staff report. So do we have anything?
I just reviewed an extension of time staff for her.
Yeah, I know.
That's the only one that was in my queue.
With you, we have been just completely inundated with only-
Well, and I think it's really-
Three of us in the office, um-
I mean, I know I'm meeting on April 1st with the Hardware Advisory Committee to do with Oakwood Land, so I presume it won't be too much longer after that to have that. And then we have, what was the other one that?
The his-
The historic-
Historic position.
So that has, that'll depend on how much of the general, I'm assuming that Peter will want to try to apply in a permanent ordinance everything that the general plan says needs to be in it. And probably, so there'll be some Mills Act and other things in there. Um, and I don't know how much of what he, he'll want to keep of what we already have on the books right now for demolition permits.
I wondered about historic, I guess urgency ordinance now will become a permanent order, how much it will play into this.
So, that's a, that's a great point, so the general plan?
Yeah.
So when, when I was asked to do an urgency ordinance, um, I attempted to draft it so that it implemented a good, anything related to what was, you know, the idea was be, was that we didn't have anything in, on the books, right? That would, um, protect against demolition or, or significant alteration. So right now the Board wants only to affect, only to have it affect demolition permits. It'll be a policy call, I believe, whether it affects alteration, significant alteration. But I did draft it in an, in an effort to bring in what would be required under the general plan for discretionary permits, including the CEQA requirements, because there's overlap between what the general plan requires of us and what CEQA separately requires at, for a cultural resource evaluation. And it didn't, I was, so my goal was to try to have those harmonized so that whatever we did under the general plan would likely satisfy the CEQA requirements for culture, for this portion of a cultural resource analysis. And so that was drafted with the general plan in mind.
And we have a couple of references to it in here in the zoning code update into like 75 years old.
So the ju- yeah.
You can demolish or modify, and so we just would want to make-
So I did look at, so again, if it's possible, there are probably, there are, I know there are things in the historic resources urgency ordinance that are in there specifically because CEQA additionally requires that we deem certain things historic resources in it. And I do believe that the, that the general plan was written in a way that was somewhat aware of the CEQA requirements. But yeah, I did, I believe that there, that CEQA is harmonized with that.
I just wanted to hear before we finalize zoning code update, that if we're going to immediately enact the ordinances, that perhaps we'd like to ripple that same information in, so it's consistent.
And, oh, I'm sorry?
Because we have things in the zoning code-
Oh, right, right, so review it against-
And so if we want to say, oh, we're all done with that section, or we really go back, search through, bring a new place that says it and make sure we match up with whatever.
Where, where does it say the historic is?
It's, it's in there.
So make sure, so make sure right now that the zoning code matches the draft.
Yeah.
Okay.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I, I just hate to, you know, finish something up knowing that we already have.
So, and, and, yeah.
And going into our April Wednesdays, we have to keep in mind there have been several, maybe five areas where we say, well, we'll come back to that.
I have a list.
Telecommunications.
Yeah, put it, put it on the list. I know we've got telecommunications, we've got animal keeping.
Yeah.
I have animal keeping, dark sky, special events, telecommunications. Then I have development in the TPZ zone, adult entertainment. I have like assorted things that I know we have outstanding based on.
Well, the adult entertainment is, we haven't really gotten it.
No, but-
It's part of the definition section.
But there's things that we've had background information provided to us knowing that we're going to come back to them, so. The telecommunications thing, I think, because we've had such recent experience, I think we need to look at that.
Oh, yeah.
Definitely see what we can do to-
Yeah, and we-
You guys did do some dark sky stuff, Gina. I looked at it, I do think we can probably get the vast majority of it-
In lighting.
Into here.
That'd be great. Yeah, I was about to bring it up.
A lot of it is taken care of by the building codes now, between the green building code and, um, energy codes. So telecommunications, special events, TPZs, uh,
Animal keeping.
Specifically residential housing, um, adult entertainment, dark sky.
I think that's it. I might have others, I have another list somewhere. I just, I just can't move it.
From one set of scribbles to my current. Tim, did you have a question?
Yeah, well, it's, can you put these on your desk, on your, your public desk? Uh, there's no way I'm going to distribute it.
Oh, was that the intent?
I don't know, I don't-
I took a pile, but I left some for Amanda in case she would like. That's what I thought she was doing, was leaving them for the board.
Oh.
Of it.
Good.
Yeah, I mean, I could, I would certainly like to have some for the counter, so you've got a big old stack.
Yes, there's a lot here.
There's a lot up here. I'll get some for Susan, get some for you, that's one call.
I don't, I haven't really-
Yeah, that's the idea.
Are we officially adjourned?
That we are.
Well, I was waiting for all our commissioner reports, it turned into a whole nother discussion. Yes, we are adjourned at 5:00 to 3:00. And the meeting is continued to tomorrow at 9:00 AM.